Columbus, Georgia, this is your city council. Mayor Skip Henderson, city manager Isaiah Hughley, Pops Barnes, District One, Glenn Davis, District Two, Bruce Huff, District Three, Toya Tucker, District Four, Charmaine Crabbe, District Five, Gary Allen, Mayor Pro Tem and District Six,
Joanne Kogle, District Seven,
Walker Garrett, District Eight, Judy Thomas, Post Nine at Large Counselor,
Tyson Begley, Post Ten at Large Counselor,
Sandra Davis, Clerk of Council, and City Attorney Clifton Fay. Columbus, Georgia, this is your city council.
Welcome to the June 20th council meeting. We appreciate y'all being here as we go about the business of the city of Columbus. And we're gonna get started, but first we're gonna begin with a prayer as we do all of our meetings. And I'm gonna ask the Narrow Way Executive Director and Pastor Charles Enfinger to come forward. And Attorney Chris, would you turn the podium light on, please, sir? Welcome Pastor.
Father, we come to you this morning again to thank you for another day, for another opportunity to serve you and to be used by you. God, we thank you, praise you, and recognize you for who you are, for your power, your sovereignty, your love, your mercy, your grace, your faithfulness, your forgiveness, and the promises in your word. But most of all today, oh God, we thank you for sending your one and only son to die a horrible, brutal, gruesome death on the Oregon Trail for a bunch of sinners such as us. We're eternally grateful for that, Father. You tell us in your word in Matthew 11:28, Jesus says, "Come unto me, all ye laboring and heavy-lading, and I will give you rest." He also says back in 2 Corinthians 7:14, he says, "If my people who are called by my name will humble themselves, pray, seek my face, and turn from that which way; then and only then will I bring healing to your land." So God, we want to continue to quote the words of Jesus to us where he prays in John, Chapter 17, "Father, may they be as one as you and I are one; then and only then will the world know that you sent me." So God, we know that we have to put our hope and trust in you and lean on our own understanding and all our ways acknowledge him. You will direct our paths. Father Jeremiah tells us, Jesus says, God says, "Come unto me, all ye laboring and heavy-lading, and I will give you rest." So God, also to call upon you and you'll show us great and mighty things we do not know. Father, we got a city with some issues here. I'm grateful for the staff that they have here, everybody that's involved in the city council. Father, I do ask you to raise up leadership here in Columbus. Father, I ask you to help us to denounce Satan. Help us to, God, run him out of town because there's no room for him here. And God, I ask you to raise up young men and women, Father, to take positions in our police force. It's downed so many people. But God, I thank you for this opportunity to be able to stand before your people at this time and voice of prayer. So God, I ask you to help us to always seek your wisdom in everything we do. In Jesus' holy and precious name I pray, amen.
Amen. Pastor Enfinger, if you take a quick second, we don't typically do this, but you've got a program that the Mayor Pro Tem was telling me about. Can you give us a quick elevator speech on the Narrow Way?
I will. I had a 30-year drug addiction and I tried to take my own life with 21 morphine pills. And God spoke in my ear and said, "I'm not done with you yet." So 13 years later, here I am doing what I do. I have a heavy burden for people struggling with addiction because I've been there. We have a women's support group that needs to meet together from time to time to help their, the ones that are struggling handle it the way my mother handled it. Unfortunately, she was forced into a drug addiction with me, never did drugs. So anyway, we decided to, I went to work for the Safe House Ministries for 19 months and God laid it on my heart to open up another facility. And I did, and my treasurer secretary, she come up to in a prayer called the Narrow Way. And we know Matthew 7:13 and 14 says, "Broad is the path and wide are the roads that lead to death and destruction." Many follow it, but small is the gate in the narrow way that lead to life and only a few will find it. So we know we're not gonna save everybody, but we're gonna do what we can. We need more facilities like this in town. But at the end of the day, everything costs money. I don't charge the clients and their families when they come in because by the time they get to me, there's no money. So we really rely on the community to donate, to donations are tax deductible. I'm gonna leave a couple of pamphlets here and a couple of business cards. We're off and running, and this is what I'll do every day for the rest of my life. I will die standing at the Narrow Way. I got a heart for it, you know? We wanna help them, it's a faith-based in-house residence. So I won't stop.
Well, sir, we appreciate you bringing the opening prayer and we also appreciate what you're dedicated to doing and helping others throughout our community. So thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right, and if you would, please stand and join me in a pledge to the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. All right, I'm gonna turn it over to our city attorney. We're required by law to hold a first reading for the taxpayers' bill of rights as close to nine o'clock as we possibly can.
Okay, thank you, Mayor. This is a hearing, again, required under Title 48 of the Georgia Code. It is required when the value of all the taxable property in Muskogee County is projected to increase. Again, reminder, if you have a residential homestead assessment freeze, your taxes should not be affected, should not be increased. This is only a required hearing when all the tax digest value in the county is projected to increase. And our finance director's here. She can come over and make a few comments. This'll be the last hearing required under the statute.
Good morning, Mr. Mayor, members of council. As the city attorney mentioned, this is the third taxpayer bill of rights hearing. We are required to hold three taxpayer bill of right hearings when the proposed millage is greater than the rollback millage. I would just like to express again that the millage rate for FY20, that's proposed for FY24, is the same millage rate that was adopted in FY23 for Urban Service District One, that amounts to 17.51 mills. For Urban Service District Two, that amounts to 11.53 mills. And for Urban Service District Four, that amounts to 10.63 mills. Again, if you, each year, the Board of Assessors is required to review and assess the value of all taxable property. And when there's been an increase in the fair market value for any specific property, the Board of Assessors is required by law to redetermine the value of the property and adjust the assessment. And so we refer to this, and the state refers to this as a reassessment. And so the rollback millage rate that was advertised and that was computed by the Tax Commissioner's Office is a millage rate that would produce the same total revenue on the current year's digest that last year's millage rate would have produced had there been no reassessments. So that's, again, why we're here this morning because the rollback millage rate was greater than what is proposed. But it just is required by law that we compute that rate so that we receive a total amount in revenue this year as we did based on last year's digest, had no reassessments occurred. And typically, the chief tax assessor, Suzanne Wydenhouse, is here. She can answer more questions specifically about the reassessments. But you know, a lot of it, if you buy, it's due to property sales. When you sell a home or purchase a home, obviously, that new homeowner that purchases that home, purchase it at a certain price, they are eligible if that's their primary residence for a homestead exemption. If you apply and are approved for a homestead exemption, then your assessed value is frozen at that point. So for all of the homeowners out there with a homestead exemption, there would be no increase in the assessed value of the property. And because there is no increase in the millage, the taxes that you pay on that home remains the same.
All right. Ms. Wydenhouse, thank you for being here. This is a public hearing, so we'll see, Mayor, if there's anybody in the audience wants to be heard, please raise your hand.
Counselor Crabbe.
Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Wydenhouse, for being here because I have some questions for you about the process of the reassessment. It's my understanding that we use Texas, we use a software that pulls up the comparables around the subject property. Is that correct?
Yes, that's one aspect.
That's the first step of it?
Well, no, it's not the first step. It's just one aspect of a revaluation as far as, it's one aspect of our computer-aided mass appraisal.
Okay, so in real estate, before I list a piece of property, I'll do a similar search, see what's selling and what the prices are around. But I have to take it, and I have software that can pull those comparables for me. And I can set the parameters, if it goes out a mile, if it goes out five miles, whatever. But then I have to take those comparables that that computer pulls up for me and I have to analyze them and pull out the ones that don't fit. For instance, I cannot, if I'm going to list a three-bedroom, two-bath, I can't use comparables that have four baths. Or, you know, because, you know, you can't compare a property that has one bath to a property that has two or more baths. They don't, they're not comparables. Also, condition is a matter. The price, you know, the square footage is a matter. There's a lot of different variables that the computer cannot analyze. If it does, then we're going to lose some comparables in the process. So who in your office goes in after the computer pulls the comparables and weeds out those that are not comparable?
So the field appraisers actually do a lot of this. When we go out into the field, we have what's called Mobile Assessor, which is a, it's a data collection tool that assists us out in the field. And basically, it's the property record card on an iPad. And we get to go out and we make sure that the parameters of the property are correct. That's step one in anything that we do, is making sure that the property parameters are correct. Then when you're talking about the comparable property feature of our computer-aided mass appraisal, we have the ability to either let the system draw the comparables or we can go in and we can override that and we can do user selective. So we have the ability to select what we're picking. Now, understand that as an appraiser, we do, in fact, on occasion, compare properties that are not a perfect apple-to-apple comparison because people modify their properties. And there may be times where it's not a perfect apple-to-apple comparison. We're never going to have two properties or five properties, we use five comps, five properties that have the exact same square footage. We're not gonna have five properties that have the exact same grading condition on them. We're not gonna have five properties that have all of the exact same features. So we're gonna make adjustments to those properties to make sure that we have as much of a like-to-like comparison as we can. On a mass appraisal basis, we use factors. Everything is assigned a factor. We start with a basic average house. And that's a grade 100. And that's basically, to kind of put a perspective on it, call it your 1970s brick rancher. You know, it's your three-bedroom, one-bath, 1970s brick ranch with seven-and-a-half-foot ceilings. That's your 100 box. Any improvements to that, anything that's better than that? Oops, sorry. Are going to have adjustments up. So say it has a second bath, there's gonna be an adjustment up. Say it has taller ceilings, there's gonna be an adjustment up. Say it's on a basement instead of a crossface, it's gonna be an adjustment up. Maybe it has a flat roof instead of a pitch roof, that's gonna be an adjustment down. And so we make those, all of those adjustments. And we look at the age, we look at the condition of the property, we look at anything that's been added to the property, anything that's been taken away from the property. Those are all the things that we look at and that we can manually do, but we have this great computer-aided mass appraisal system that helps us do a lot of the calculations so that we don't have to manually sit there and do them. I do go in and adjust all of the tables that run in the background of this system so that the appraisers aren't having to manually do all of this. I go in and do those adjustments with the managers. We sit there and we work the calculations to say, okay, we need to adjust these tables up, we need to adjust these tables down. We compare those to the market, we run statistical testing to say, this is a correct adjustment, this is an incorrect adjustment. And we test the system over and over and over again to make sure that we get the numbers correct. And then we break it all the way down to a neighborhood, to a subdivision level. And we look at it from a subdivision level. So then we statistically test those subdivisions to make sure that our values are correct in those subdivisions. And we're looking for sales ratios that are going to be within the state requirements of .36 to .44 of assessed value to sales price. And those are the state requirements. And if we fall outside of those requirements, then we run into an issue with our digest not meeting the state requirements. We're also looking for uniformity and we're looking for bias. We wanna make sure that we don't have any bias. Maybe we have an appraiser who prefers newer properties to older houses. We wanna make sure that we're not seeing a bias in the way they value those properties because it can be a very subjective thing when we go out to grade a property. And so we measure that bias, so we measure those biases based on appraiser as well. And we measure it based on type of property, based on style of house, based on your build, all of those things. And we break all of that down and we test all of that statistically. We do it by appraiser, we do it by neighborhood, and we do it by the citywide, by residential and commercial.
Can you go back to the state requirements? You said 3.6 to 4.4, can you?
.36 to .44.
.36 to .44. Can you explain that a little bit?
That's a sales ratio. So what we do is we look at a house that has sold that meets the definition of an arm's-length transaction because we can only use qualified sales in building a market. So we have to look and say, is this a qualified sale? Is this an arm's-length transaction that is between an unrelated buyer and seller, each acting in their own best interests? And if that is the case, then that's a good sale. And we're gonna look at that sales price and we're gonna compare that to the assessed value that we have on there. And that is the sales ratio. So we're gonna take that sales price, we're gonna take that assessed value, and we're gonna divide that sales price into that assessed value to determine that sales ratio. And the state says that we have to be between .36 and .44. We operate off of 40%, that's the assessed value. If you think about this from a fair market price to a sales price, we're looking to be within 5%, whether it's 5% under or 5% over. We're looking for 5% either way of that sales price is what we're looking for.
So can you explain to me why some of these assessments are doubling and why some of them, I've been told, their assessments have gone up 200 and 300%?
There are some that have increased dramatically. And there's no question they have. We have new construction, we have people who have done remodels on their houses, we have, you know, properties and businesses that have not been looked at since 2017. And, you know, we have to look at these every three to six years. And so when we did the revaluation last year, not everybody was assessed. I will tell you, we sent 70,600 and something notices. 54,000 of them had changes on them, okay? Out of those 54,000, we actually had 7,900 that went down, okay? We also had, out of that 54,000, 32,000 plus were homesteaded. In other words, their assessment went up, their fair market value went up, but there's no change to their taxable value. Out of those homesteaded properties, only 112 of them had changes to their taxable value. And what that is, is those are homeowners that made changes to their property, whether they put a pool in or an addition or something to their property. They had a change to their local value. So almost 60% of the change notices that we've sent consisted of property that is frozen. So you are gonna see some people that had some big increases. There's no question. We also updated all of our income tables. So you're going to have some property owners that saw their values going up. And that's because we saw rental rates increase on properties. And when we saw those rental increases, that caused us to adjust our income tables because we use income module as well. And so we have, we input all of the rents into the system and we update those based on what's going on with the market. And so we had those creating increases as well.
What do Airbnbs do to the market?
So I don't have a specific answer on the Airbnb issue to be able to say, hey, these particular class of short-term rentals had exponential increases. But we do keep track of what their rental rates are and they are, we try and value those on an income basis when we know that they're an Airbnb or a Verbo or a short-term vacation rental. So we do, in fact, value those. When we know that that's what they are, we value those on an income basis.
So your department has, do they get red-flagged when something looks out of whack?
Yes.
And then you, and have, has your department gone in and personally hand looked at some of these that are out of whack?
Every single property that had an increase greater than 20% received an additional review.
Okay.
So, and we did, I mean, we pull the sheets and we say it's 20%. Whether it's 20% greater or 20% less, if it's outside of that 20%, then we did an additional review of those properties.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Counselor Davis?
Thanks, ma'am. I'm trying to, I wanna hone in a little bit more on the human element to this software that concerns me. And I've been getting a lot of calls lately and listening to some of my constituents. And, you know, I ask myself the question, when do you ever catch up with your valuations?
Never.
Well.
Because we do this in arrears.
Well, the argument there is that you got, if you got properties that are coming out of a boon, okay, I mean, you're just, the economy's doing well. And then you go into a pandemic, a severe pandemic. And then you come back out where you're in a questionable, quote, some element of a recession. And then, but valuations are going up 50, 70%, 100%. When do you ever catch up and where does it add in? I mean, I'm thinking to myself, does it ever go the other way based on these factors? But what is, you know, most people, when you budget and you look at increases, you're looking at the government numbers, economic numbers, with CPI, percentage of increases. But how do these homes, and a lot of them are profit businesses that have been appealed over the past, whether it's through the BOE or through the office or several times, how do they continue to get spit out at a tremendous increase on the property? And then you question, what is happening in our local economy to change that when there's a lot of variables that are not and that the leading economic indicators are not showing that there's changes and increases?
So we, as you recall, I mean, I've made this comment here before about the fact that for '20 and '21, despite the fact that the market was increasing, we didn't make changes. We held firm where we were. And we started making those increases last year coming out of the pandemic because we didn't want to make changes during the pandemic. It was too uncertain and we didn't wanna do that to the taxpayers. So we started making those changes last year. We were conservative in what we did last year. We were a little bit less so this year because we had no choice. We had to bait. Our sales ratio was telling us that we had to be. Our sales ratio was telling us that we were undervalued based on what properties we're selling for. And that's our biggest indicator, is what is a property selling for? And so that's where, that's where we start making, we start making changes. Now, to your point about business owners who regularly appeal properties, yeah, we have them. We have business owners who appeal their property once every three years because they want that freeze. And they're preventing their properties from increasing while they have that appeal freeze in place. And so what happens is, is when that appeal freeze comes off, we try and bring them up to the market level and they appeal again so that they can get their value reduced for another three years. And we go through this process over and over and over again. I'm gonna give you a great example of this. Currently, right now, I have 680 residential appeals. 435 of them are the same business. One property owner, 435 appeals. They tried to appeal last year, they missed the deadline. So they have appealed almost everything, not quite everything, that they own, 435 of them. Out of the 680, 245 of them were appealed by other homeowners. So 435 are the same property owner. This is an owner who buys low, he goes in, he fixes the properties up and he puts them on the market for a flipped increase. And then if he can't sell them, he turns around and he rents them. And the rental amounts support the values that we have on these properties. But he is going to come in and he is going to appeal all of these in the hopes that when he goes to the Board of Equalization, he can get even a 1% or 2% reduction on his value because that adds up for him when he has that many.
Well, it seems to me, again, I'm thinking of all these conversations we're having on AI and ChatGPT and all that kind of stuff that's out there. It seems like that, you know, it's almost like the properties are being inflated just to push them to the Board of Equalization to see what they come up with. But then you look at the local, I go back to the local economy and look, just, you know, you got a shortage of housing? Yeah, that's supply and demand.
That's what helps drive those up.
But does that, well, does that really reflect the true valuations in your economy? And when do the point, you can make the argument that you said you never catch up.
We never catch up because we're always looking at sales that are a year or two years old.
What I hear by, when I hear that, it's just like every year you can expect an increase that the software's gonna spit out that increase. But where do you catch up?
Well, here's the thing.
Hold on, where is the balance of where you catch up? Because theoretically, a community or an economy can only be pushed to so far before it starts imploding.
So here's the thing, I look at value, I don't look at taxes, I look at value. And our value, the point of catch-up is a .40 sales ratio study, okay? And what that means is, that means that we are valued exactly what properties are selling for. That's the point that we're caught up. But we use a market that is anywhere from one to three years old, depends on the number of sales. Right now, I have enough sales from '22 and '21 that I'm able to use those two years for our sales. Okay, so that's where we are. We've got two years' worth of sales. I have somewhere in the neighborhood of 8,000 sales that we're able to use to establish this market and to establish valuations. We never actually catch up. But to your answer, no, we don't just automatically spit out, we don't automatically spit out increases. I had 7,900 parcels that went down.
Well, no, I'm not concerned about.
That's 14, that's 14 and a half percent went down.
I'm concerned about the software. I'm questioning the software and how it's working and what it does. And I'm thinking to myself that, you know, you said, in how many cases does the software reverse valuations and lowers them?
No, in this particular, in this particular year, we had 7,900 parcels that went down. That's 14 and a half percent of the 54,000 chain. That's fourteen and a half percent of the fifty-four hundred, fifty-four thousand changes went down.
If you have a tough economic environment, will the software reverse it and lower valuations for everybody?
It's, I, I think you're misunderstanding what the software does. The software is not artificial intelligence. This software does calculations for us, but it's, it's what we do as appraisers in the field, what we put into the system. The, the software is just doing our calculations for us. It's not, it's not doing the valuations.
You're making my, you're making my point for me. I'm asking you earlier about the human element.
Yeah.
Where is that human element? Because evaluations are going out and it just seems like people are having to go back through the process over and over. But I look at the demographics, I look at the economic factors, the market data. It tells me that the populace is not changing much. It tells me that the, uh, income per capita's not changing much, that the average salary's not changing much, that we got people on fixed income, that we got people renting a lot of properties in town. And where is the point that you've put so much pressure on your local community that you can make the argument that you're creating homelessness? You're encouraging people to be pushed out of the counties? To go find housing or living somewhere else? You can make the case that affordable housing, which we always talk about, is no longer affordable. And we're somewhat shooting ourselves in the foot. We're trying to tackle it, but we're also pushing it on the other side that's causing an increase, because all those costs get passed on to everybody else. And you can make the case that you're creating poverty because the cost of living is going up, whether taxes, whether utility bills, whether food bills, whether, oh, that's why I talked about, being in this current economy, everything's going up. But I don't see the ability to catch up with that in your local economy. So do valuations really match up to where we're at today?
We, we know the valuations match up.
Well, I, I mean, I don't see a lot of people buying and selling right now.
Our sales ratio tells us.
Interest rates, sky high.
Our sales ratio tells us that our values are getting up because we're looking at what things are actually selling for. That's what we're determining. When we look at fair market value, it's what would the property sell for? And we're looking at comparable sales in order to make that determination. So I, I look at value. I, like I said, I'm gonna repeat this, I don't look at taxes. I look at value. What is a property worth? And I'm required by the state of Georgia to make sure that our property in Muskogee County is valued within five percent of what it sells for on the open market. And that's what I do. And that's where we are with this increase. Our sales ratio going into this year, where we were in December of twenty-twenty-two, when we were looking at what things were selling for versus what they were valued at, our sales ratio was somewhere in the neighborhood of a thirty percent as opposed to a thirty-six. So we were undervalued. There's no question that the tax digest was undervalued. And we had to increase that value to bring it up to the state required. And just let me throw this out. If we don't have our values between, now, the state says between point three six and point four four. If we don't at least have our values to point three eight, that means that when we try and collect on public utilities, we can't use a point four oh sales ratio for public utilities. We have to use whatever the sales ratio is, which can mean a loss of tax dollars through public utilities. So we, in my office, I don't look at taxes, I look at sales ratio. And I look at valuation because I have to maintain us to a certain level to make sure that our digest is approved so that y'all can get your collection order. And if we don't bring those values up to within five percent of what they're selling for, we run the risk of being out of compliance. And if we are out of compliance, that affects our ability to collect on public utilities, that affects our ability to get a collection order. And if we are out of compliance for multiple years, then we can actually be fined by the state. Those are, those are the penalties for being out of compliance.
I don't know the case where we ever been out of compliance. Um, but I will say that sometimes I question the software just because of, somebody has ability to purchase, purchase a property for whatever. That may not reflect the true value in other areas. So it somewhat tells me that a lot of people are getting penalized for whatever reason. Because somebody chooses to buy a business or a home at a higher price. That is probably not the market, but the software's spitting it out at it some inflated price for whatever reason that they're purchasing. And we know, we, everybody gets calls about people calling all the time about wanting to buy your house at, at extreme rates. And, and then it turns around and affects everybody else, which puts that more and more economic pressure on those individuals. I guess what I'm saying is, where's the median? I mean, where does it catch up? Where does it balance out? And what I was worried about is that software, you told me that it never does. It continues to spit it out at a higher amount.
I did not say that. I did not say that. The software is nothing but a giant calculator. That's what it is. It's the field appraisers going out and reviewing property and putting grades on the property and looking at the condition of the property and looking at the permits that people are taking out for the improvements that they're making on the property and the new construction they are building.
And they're doing it on all these properties for it's entered into the system? Or you just let the system push it out every year?
No, we go in there and we, and we physically enter all of this information into the system. Well, actually, they do it on an iPad. And then that information gets loaded in so that a supervisor can review what the field appraiser is doing out in the field. And we have the ability to quality check what the, what the field appraiser is doing in the field. And then if we are in agreement with what they're doing as supervisors, then we can push that down into the computer-aided mass appraisal system, the CAMAS system, which can do the calculations. When we have increases, and we use twenty percent as our, as our threshold, and not increases, but changes that are twenty percent, whether it's twenty percent greater or twenty percent less, we look at all of those a second time. We then go through those and make sure that those valuations are correct. Whether it's a twenty percent decrease or greater than a twenty percent decrease, we're gonna look at those. Is it greater than twenty percent increase? We're gonna take another look at those. So we do have eyes on this, physical eyes. The CAMAS system is nothing but a glorified calculator. It's doing our calculations for us. The data that goes into that is put in by humans. I'm the one who goes in and redoes the cost tables. I redo the income tables. We make sure that our neighbor, our neighborhoods are aligned. Because somebody who buys a house in Green Island Hills, that house is not going to be compared to somebody who buys a house in Fort Benning, or Benning Hills. That's not going to be compared. We compare these by neighborhood. And that's some of the criteria that we use in the market modeling. Um, we use regression modeling in order to determine what our percentages, what our factors are going to be for our adjustments. But then we also look at things on a neighborhood basis. We take it all the way down to the neighborhood level. And we look at them from a neighborhood level and we run ratios and statistical studies on a neighborhood level in order to determine, are our valuations in that neighborhood correct? And yes, if your neighbors are selling their houses for higher, that can in fact push your value up. No different than, than what Counselor Krab said. And that's that when she goes to list a house, she's going to look for other comparable. She's gonna look for what other properties have sold for in that neighborhood in order to determine what she's gonna list that property for. What does she think her client can sell that property for? And that's going to be based on other sales in that neighborhood of houses that are as close to the same as the one she's trying to list. And that's exactly what we do in our market modeling.
Well, let me just say, I, I really appreciate you coming in here and having this conversation because we needed to have it. We really needed to have it. We really had to discuss this. I think the last time you came in and you announced the news about the increase in the tax digest, you know, it was just, uh, a lot of us are trying to figure out how that has happened. You know, for many, many years, uh, when the economy was in the, in the country moving up, we were tending to go down or sideways. And we were fighting at the sixty-day mark, just, just trying to keep it above that as far as the fund balance goes, just trying to keep that in balance in the budget based on that. And then all of a sudden, in the last three years, we've had these tremendous amounts of increase in revenue. And some of it, you know, I mean, you can comprehend, I can comprehend. But to most people in the community, they're asking the questions. These are the questions I get, okay? And I'm just projecting them back to you that, you know, people are starting to ask it, the city's collecting a lot of money now. And then we point them back at valuations that are going higher and higher, but yet they're not equating it to the current economic conditions or when the economy was moving up at a rapid pace. So, um, there is a concern, uh, and it would be around those two things. The amount of money that's being collected, the increase in the tax digest. Well, I just shared with you, the populace is not increasing. And there's a lot of other economic indicators that are not increasing, they're staying the same. But valuations are going up at a much rapid pace in many, many cases.
Yes.
And there's your, uh, well, you know, you add in the sales tax revenue, that's one aspect of it. And the catch-up, we always talked about the tax freeze that eventually, whether people passed or people sold their properties, that eventually those properties would catch up. I think in the last few years, you could make that case that a lot of them have caught up with the sales out there. But still, there's that point of concern, it concerns me, it should concern everybody here. Where do you, where does it, you catch up? Or where does it go in the opposite direction as far as valuations? Because that pressure that's being put on our community is real.
So.
It's real and, and it, it, you know, in the, in the business world, people call it bankruptcy, people call it default, you can call it imploding, you can call it the bubble pops. You can call it a lot of those things. But I don't, what I see out in the community and the people I represent, there's a tremendous amount of people in this community on fixed income. And those costs are not being absorbed, they're being passed on. And that should be a concern from all of us. Because it's indirectly a challenge that we're trying to solve challenges in our community, whether it's affordable housing, all the rest. But yet, there's a pressure that's being put that's creating more. And it's growing in such a rapid pace that, that it concerns me as a community leader and should concern everybody of, of what it's doing out there. Because I don't, I don't see the catch-up.
So we don't, I'm gonna, I'm gonna say it one more time.
You're okay.
We don't do taxes in my office, we do valuations.
And I, I, I know what you're telling, you, you're doing your job, okay? But having this conversation, we have to have this, we don't have these conversations enough. We have to have these conversations because that's, the community's seeing that and we need to understand that. And then people need to hear from you on, on, you know, I told you, that's, you know, the last time you came here, I hadn't seen you in a while, but you were the bearer of some good news as far as the city goes. But on the other side, people are looking at it differently and we need to, we need to make sure that we're explaining it well and that people understand. And then I, I'm sure there's gonna be still a lot of people that get caught in that trap. And, you know, it concerns me. Uh, it really concerns me whether it comes to job growth or other things because those, those are the things that are moving you up. And I don't, I don't see that right now. I just see a lot of pressure on, on the cost of living that's going up every day. And, um, we, we all need to be concerned with that. Anyway, thank you for sharing and explaining both sides of whether the software or the human element. Those are questions that I've been getting on a quite often basis now. So, um, having it where people can see it, I think, really, really helps. Instead of them calling you or calling us, they can see it now on, I guess this goes on YouTube, right, the city manager? So anyway, thank you, thank you, Madam Tax Assessor.
Um, we've got one counselor to go. Uh, Counselor Thomas?
I'm, uh, in a, a lot of ways like Counselor Davis. I've been getting calls from, uh, property owners in Columbus, mainly the, uh, commercial property owners. And when they say that their, um, uh, evaluations have come in fifty, seventy percent higher than they were last year, it has sort of knocked them far a loop. And I, I understand, I believe, I understand the process, that the tax assessor's office assesses the property and then the tax commissioner's office, based on that assessment, sends out the tax bill. We, at this point, have been told numerous times by the city manager and other, uh, the finance director that Columbus, that the, the government is in a, uh, is in one of the best positions financially that we've ever been in. So my, my question, and I would ask the city attorney, can we, as a council, lower the, the amount that, uh, is being assessed to these, uh, property owners uh, so that they are not experiencing a fifty percent increase or a seventy-five percent increase in their property, in their property assessment, which will in turn turn into their tax assessment? Can we lower that amount?
Uh, what you can do is lower the millage rate, uh, while it's on first reading today. You got a millage ordinance that is placing seventeen point fifty-one mills on USD one. You can lower that amount, but then you're gonna have to make a corresponding reduction in the overall city budget for operations if you do that. Because you're gonna have to try to equalize your, your millage rate versus your expenses. So the short answer is yes, you can lower it while it's on first reading today. You could lower a millage rate, uh, but you would have to make some sort of corresponding adjustment in the budget to reflect that.
Well, I guess that's part of my concern. We set the budget before we knew what the, uh, tax, uh, assessor's, uh, report was going to be. And we set, we have adopted a, um, a balanced budget based on what we knew at the time. And I, I'm not sure, I, I don't, I don't claim to be a financial wizard in this area. Why we would have to lower the budget if we set the budget, uh, before we ever heard what the assessment was? Are you telling me that, that, that that's what we've got to do?
Well, I think you need to hear from the finance folks. If you lower the millage rate, you are gonna bring in less in property taxes and that's gonna have an effect on the overall budget, so.
But the effect on the overall budget, it would seem to me, would not necessarily be in specific budget items, but would be in the, uh, the reserve account. I mean, we've got, we've got money in the reserve account that we've never had before. Is that right?
We have.
Uh, Ms. Mayor, when she's done, I would like to make a comment and then let the finance director.
I think now would be a good time for the finance director to kinda address some of the questions that have come up.
Right, and so in terms of the budget being presented, um, it, it must be presented with an estimate in terms of our revenues and as far as our expenditures. And the estimate, the estimate in terms of revenues did rely on the current millage rate, uh, which is the same millage rate for FY twenty-three. So the proposed millage, uh, the proposed rate, the proposed budget dollars relies on that same millage rate. If there was a reduction in the millage rate, as the city attorney mentioned, um, that would equate to dollars being reduced from the budget. Um, the value of, of one mill right now is about five point nine million dollars uh, based on the, um, estimated digest that we received from, um, the tax assessor's office up to this point.
Which we received after we set. Which we received after we set the budget. Is that not correct?
Well, the budget is proposed at this point. I mean, it would be adopted in terms of, um, the budget.
Didn't we adopt a balanced budget before we ever heard from the tax assessor's office on what the, uh, millage rate would, and what that would, would, uh, bring in?
Well, the budget was proposed with the same millage rate that was adopted in last year, but...
But the digest...
The dollar amount is what I'm talking about.
The, I think the digest, there, she's asking, was the digest, the anticipated digest, and then the actual digest as reported by the tax assessor? That, did that not, did that change?
So, in terms of the digest, when we're preparing the budget, I mean, there's a lot of work that's still happening in terms of what the tax assessor's doing. And what we do, we do request a revised digest, a revised, so there was a requested digest, uh, from the tax commissioner's office, a revised 22 digest, so to speak. Um, and that digest did take into account, you know, some of the appeals that sort of happened after the fact and some of the other changes that were made after the digest was approved. So we do receive an estimated digest while we're preparing the budget. Um, in terms of what we estimated and what we needed to balance the budget, the millage rate remained the same, from a proposed budget standpoint.
And so there's no other, in, in all of my years at least, you've done it the same way, and we get those projected, we get those projections from the tax commissioner's office. Uh, and that's the only thing that we can operate on as we package the budget in those closing days.
That's right, that's correct.
And so that is the only way, we don't have a number that we can give anybody other than what the tax commissioner provides to us, and then we prepare the budget based on that.
Yes.
Okay.
Okay. Councillor Crabbe?
Oh, I'm sorry, I didn't mean to poke my butt, but I will ask a question.
Okay.
Um, going back to the evaluations, cash offers on sales do not get appraised at the time of sale. So how, what's the percentage of cash sales that you used in your evaluation? Because that will throw off your evaluations, because we were getting crazy cash offers that were tens of thousands of dollars above the list price. So agents would use our way of calculating a price. We would get a cash offer from some buyer in California for 10, 25,000 above list price, they would sell. So that's got to throw off our evaluations here, because if they were funded and they had an appraisal at the time of closing, they would not have appraised.
The, the problem with cash sales is they're still valid arms-length transactions, and they do have an effect on the overall market, but they are considered a valid sale. You had a willing buyer and a willing seller, and we have to assume that they're knowledgeable. We do take financing into consideration if there's something, um, unique about the financing, say it's a wraparound mortgage, or, um, there was additional consideration, maybe there was some personal property or a barter, you know, something of that nature. We do take those into consideration when we're reviewing a sale. But an all-cash offer, um, if it closes for that all-cash price, and that's what they're paying their transfer tax on, that's a valid sale.
Even appraisal...
And I realize, and I realize that it may seem like it's not going to appraise, but the truth of it is, is you get enough of those cash sales in a market, it's no longer the outlier, it now becomes the market.
Exactly. And it's, and it creates issues like this.
Mm-hmm.
I consider that inflation, and I thought that we had measures that we cannot do our evaluations on inflation, inflationary, um, I don't know the word, issues, or we have, we have to take inflation into consideration, and we have to be, we have to back that out.
So, when you look at it from a PT-32 standpoint, that's the form that shows the, the rollback millage rate, and Angelica can help answer some of these questions a, a little bit better than I do. In, when we are evaluating a property, we look at, is this increase in value an inflationary, AKA a market-driven increase? Any market increase is by nature and by definition inflationary. Or is this real growth? Real growth is the result of new construction, it's the result of an addition, it's the result of a brand-new business going in. That is real growth. And so when we calculate the PT-32s, no, I don't actually calculate them in my office, I do review them, um, they're sent up to my office for review so we can make sure our numbers, um, are correct. We look at what's inflationary, and that's what drives the rollback rate. It's not the real growth that's driving the rollback rate, it's that inflationary growth, which is by definition, market increase. That's the result of all of those cash buyers, that's the result of the bidding wars, that's the result of just an increase in the overall market. Um, I can tell you, when I bought my house, I ended up in a bidding war. No, I'm not a cash buyer, I work for the city. So, you know, I ended up in a bidding war and I paid more than less. Um, that's just what happens. Um, and so just because it was above list price does not mean it's not a valid sale, does not mean that it can't be used in the market.
Okay, thank you. Angelica, um, I believe that during the time of the budget review, we had a little bracket on assumptions. And the assumption was a 2% increase.
Yes.
So what's the increase, what's the actual increase, not the assumption?
Well, um, in terms of the digest as a whole, the actual increase is, is what we advertised, which is about 11%. But keep in mind that the digest as a whole is reflective of all the parcels in Muskogee County, all the districts in Muskogee County, to include the TADS. So in terms of what was used for the budget, we use for the budget what we, um, have seen in terms of collections that, revenues that are actually deposited by the city, which would impact the reserves, which is, which is 2%. We've seen on average, on a three-year blended average, about a 2% increase in the actual revenue that we've collected and deposited and used for our general operations for the city. Now, as a whole, as far as the digest, it's about 11%. But again, that includes the, the TADS. And the money that goes into the TADS, that we receive for the TADS, goes strictly to the TAD to benefit the TAD, and that is not money that we can use.
Oh, don't get me started on the TADS. We don't have enough time today, so we'll just use, leave that for another day.
And so I, I...
No offense, Chris.
So, also, um, just to make reference into what we've seen over the past few years in terms of our revenues, that has been, you know, specifically, uh, revenues that, that's other than property tax revenues, that's got title of alborum taxes. We've, you know, seen increases in that over the state. You know, a few years ago, we received zero dollars in title of alborum taxes. We've seen that incrementally increase over the last few years, um, based on a few things. One, one of those being the distribution model changing at the state level, um, more local dollars, uh, were allocated here by the, by our state legislators, so we've seen increases, um, relative to that. Um, we've seen increases in our sales taxes. Our, uh, three-year blended averages in terms of sales taxes is about, uh, just about 7% in terms of the increases that we received in sales taxes. So those are some of the revenue sources that we've seen significant increases in over the last few years, which has ultimately impacted our fund balance.
So...
Property taxes, though, the year-over-year, the, the average increase that we receive is about 2%, and that's what we use for the budget.
So you're saying that there's a 2% increase in the property tax income or digest?
There's a 2% increase in the tax dollars that we anticipate that we, that the city will actually receive to use for general operations.
Okay, so, but what are we actually receiving through the property tax if you back out the TADS and the other unusable funds?
Backing out the TADS is about 2%. Including the TADS, it would be about...
So, you're saying that we, the property tax alone is bringing in 11% more?
Yeah, the, the digest itself is projected to...
Okay, so the whole digest, that includes all of the other, the sales tax, you know, the ad valorem taxes, everything?
That, that's just real and personal property taxes, that's property taxes. The 11% is just property taxes.
Okay, I thought that, that's what I asked. Okay, so we're, 11% increase on property taxes alone, because that's what you're saying?
For the tax digest, yes.
And then you also said that we're bringing in more sales tax revenue, we're bringing in more ad valorem tax revenue?
Mm-hmm.
And so, what's the combined percentage increase that we're bringing in? Because it's not 2%.
So when you talk about...
That is actual usable income. And I want to know, where's that extra income? If we don't do something, where's that extra income going?
I, I think if you had a breakdown, and I think you'd have in the past, I, I'll just to clear it up. If you had a, a menu of revenue from the various sources, um, increase in property tax, um, increase in ad valorem, uh, excuse me, uh, tax ad valorem tax, increase in sales tax, and then I think what I hear, uh, Councillor Crabbe asking, when you calculate those increases, how much of an increase did we receive last year, or do we think we're gonna end the year with this year? Is that a total of $20 million of, of an increase over last year? And the line items would be property, tax ad valorem, sales tax, franchise fees, all of the categories. What's the total increase?
I mean, that's a little complex, when you look at what we're talking about...
I get it, but we have to make a decision.
Right, but when you're talking about what, what we're adding to the reserves, is that what we're talking about?
Looking at all the funding sources, just total in comparison, what the funding was last fiscal year versus this year.
Mm-hmm.
And, and amount, and the, she's asking for a percentage.
For the various categories?
Uh...
Because we're going off, council here is going off a 2% increase. And it's obvious that, you know, that's the assumption that we were given in the proposed budget. And it's obvious that the digest is increasing by more than 2%. Property taxes alone, you said, are, are increasing by 11%.
No, that was the tax digest, that, not what we actually collect. So the digest as a whole includes all of the parcels that are in the TADS and in the various urban service districts.
Okay, so, okay, so how much do we, so is the assumption on just the increase? So if we're collecting, if the digest is 11%, how much do we collect from that 11%?
So our assumption is that we'll see a 2% increase in the tax revenue that the city actually can use.
I would think by now, we can go off, we can push the assumption to the side and we can actually go on the actual. What are we actually going to collect or increase? Because it's more than 2%, it's more than the assumption.
Well, at the end of the day, you're still making an assumption, because, um, we can, we never assume that we're gonna receive 100% collection. History tells us that we fall within a 99 to, 98 to 99% collection rate.
Okay, so back that out. So back out that 2%. Back out the TADS.
I think, I think the, the property digest is not complete anyway, because you've got, um, you've got appeals...
We have value and dispute as a result of appeals, which we estimate is gonna be somewhere in the neighborhood of 3%. 3% value and dispute of the...
That's another question I have about the disputes. I have heard that you're, that you're not handling any of the disputes, that you're allowing them to go to the Board of Equalization.
That is not true.
Okay, thank you for clarifying that.
That is not true at all. We, we, anytime we receive an appeal, we will, um, we receive that appeal, appeals are being worked as they're being received, um, in the order in which they're being received. And we send the field appraisers back out, they review the property. If there is something that we have incorrect about the property, maybe there's a condition issue we didn't know about from the exterior of the property, and we can make an adjustment to value based on that. Or maybe we have more bathrooms than what the property actually has, something like that, um, then we'll do what's called a 306C, which is a change notice, which says, hey, we've reviewed your property, we made an adjustment, here's what it is, if they still disagree, they can continue on. But if we go out there and we believe that our value is correct, um, then what we'll do is, they will then go on to the Board of Equalization if they, if they so choose to continue that appeal after we review it.
What percentage goes on to the Board of Equalization, would you say?
It, it, it really depends, it really depends. Um, we, we've had, um, I, I mean, I can't even, I can't even give you a number, to be honest. It, it all depends on what properties are being appealed. Um, we can have, some years we can have a lot go to the BOE, some years we can have almost nothing go to the BOE. Um, it really, it really just depends.
So is your, are you saying that your department is pretty aggressive when it comes to these appeals of getting them resolved as soon as possible?
Yes, because we have limited amount of time that we're allowed to process these appeals. We're on a, we're on a state mandated deadline.
Okay.
Um, we only have so many days that we can process them, and then if they are continued on to the Board of Equalization, then we have to get those over to the Board of Equalization, and we can't just give them all of them at once. So we start processing immediately, and we try and do batches of 50 to 100 at a time, um, that if they're going to the Board of Equalization, get forwarded to the Board of Equalization. We'll be starting to take appeals to the Board of Assessors for their review of our appeal work, um, not this coming week, but the following week. Um, we'll start, we'll be, we'll be starting to, uh, put them before the board for them to, to review what we're doing.
Okay, thank you for that clarification.
So, but yeah, we're looking about 3% is what we're estimating for value and dispute.
Okay, thank you. I think our, our concern and our, um, you know, frustration is, um, we know that we're bringing in more money than what we assumed we would be bringing in with our budget. And we, I mean, I, you know, I believe the councillors figured that, and that's why we were able to use some of the refund, the fund balance to take care of some of the issues that we felt were important with, um, law enforcement. Um, I think that there's a lot of issues that I'm hearing that we need to still deal with, with parks and recreation. Now I've got a kind of an inside ear, you know, on the naditorium, and with my husband being there, little pillow talk. And there's, um, some repairs that have been delayed for several years, and they're not being taken care of. And I really thought that the naditorium should be up and going with, you know, top, top of the line, because we had two pools that we weren't taking care of for the last two years. And so I would have thought that those funds would have been put into the naditorium, and the naditorium would be at, you know, the very top of its maintenance. Um, and I'm hearing now that that's not the case. So there's other, there's some other departments, not just law, law enforcement, that need some of our attention too. So I'm gonna talk to the public here, you know, I'm, we're trying to have this conversation out in the open, transparency, because you, you kind of see the frustration and what, how this group is trying to please you, but also, we have some responsibilities to you because we have to maintain, um, a city, the city infrastructure, and we need tax dollars to do that. And so we're trying to get it all balanced out with limited information. I'll just, I'll just say it, I mean, we can't, we can't get an answer on how much money we really actually would have if we... how much money we really actually would have if we're bringing in these property taxes. And so, I, I don't know where we stand, but, um, I assure the citizens that we are discussing it, and we are trying to find a, a nice balance between the two.
All right. Just want to say, City Manager.
Mayor, um, yeah, I just went and pulled up some notes, and I want the Finance Director to speak again. But I, I think where I was trying to, I was trying to at least identify when we talk about, you know, the, the revenue, additional revenue that we've brought in, and the increase in reserve and, and all of that. Just from my notes, uh, as an example of what I'm looking to her to share some information. But, um, but I, um, reported to this council in, in one session that, and, and I'll just show you re, from my notes, that we, at that time, had a hundred and eighteen days in our fund balance reserve, our rain day fund. Uh, and that was sixty-two million dollars. And, and, um, and that was after we had set aside, as you know, we were implementing the new pay study. And we had set aside ten and a half million, uh, to implement the pay study. And we ended up with the pay study with the above and beyond for C D L, and above and beyond for police, public safety. We ended up spending somewhere around eighteen to twenty million. But at that time, we had a hundred and eighteen days in our reserve fund. And, and here's how that hundred and eighteen days, uh, broke down. Two point five million, um, in, in that hundred and eighteen days. And, and where our money was coming from, but we had set aside two point five million for general government capital, three point five million for public safety capital. Five point two million we had remaining in our CARES Act reserve. Three million we had set aside for jail design, one point six million CARES Act reserve for OLOS. And, and that was twenty-five million total for all of those things that, and, and we still had a hundred and eighteen days in reserve, that, and those things that I called off totaled twenty-five million that we had set aside and still had a hundred and eighteen days. And so, yeah, we've been doing great. But then I went on to share with you at that time, here's where the money came from that we had. At that time, our sales tax collection, we were up seven point one million dollars in sales tax collection. And part of that was because the state had calculated some errors. And they sent us some additional sales tax money, Finance Director, believed to the tune of three million dollars. But our sales tax collection was up seven point one million dollars. Our tag at the lower tax was up seven point three million dollars. Occupation taxes up one point four million. Property taxes up nine hundred and sixty thousand dollars. And so when, with the conversation that we're having about property tax, wanna be clear that all of what we've shared with you was not just property tax. Insurance premium was up eight hundred thousand dollars. Recording intangibles was up seven hundred thirty thousand dollars. And, uh, we had not, when I shared this with you, had, had not had a millage increase in tax, or a tax increase on citizens since two thousand eight, and we still have not. Uh, and so in fact, the taxes I shared with you had decreased, we had decreased the millage rate. Taxes for citizens over the last five years. And, and we have a healthy, and still have a healthy pension fund. And so I wanted to, I was looking, Finance Director, for a breakdown of, you know, what are the line items on that revenue? And then when you draw the line and calculate the total, and it comes to twenty million dollars, it becau, it was because of sales tax and, and, uh, franchise fees and all of those other things. Property tax was only nine hundred and sixty thousand dollars up. Out of all that money that I just broke down, uh, Finance Director. And so, it is not property taxes alone, it's, it's a small amount. But when you get seven point one million dollars increase in sales taxes and, and seven million in, uh, tag at the lower. That's where that money was coming from, and that money, when you talk about sales tax and, and, and tag at the lower fee and franchise fees, those things are not guaranteed to continue to be. I don't know that we're gonna get a seven million dollar increase in our sales tax this year. Maybe we will, but maybe we won't, will not. And so, um, and, and I'll say this before I turn to the Finance Director. Mayor, I, I, you know, I, I said to you, and, and, and it's because the Finance Director has said to me. She's concerned about where we are and where we will be two years from now. Because in, in the short time between you introducing, presenting your budget at three hundred and thirty-two million. In add delete, we added two million dollars. And then on first read, we added two million dollars. And so, from the three thirty-two presented, we're now at three thirty-six. And, and, and of course, we've got a new pay study that we implemented that ended up at about eighteen million. We told you that we can sustain, we can pay for it and sus, sustain it, and we can. Well, we've got integrated waste looking at us. We've not addressed that. And so, when we talk about the future, I'm saying to you that I'm concerned, the City Manager, and I've shared that with you, Mayor. Because she shared it with me about two years, three years out. And so I just say that we need to proceed with caution. And, and I'll, I'll turn it to the Finance Director.
Right, so in terms of the overall increase in the general fund, um, as far as revenue projection standpoint. We do anticipate, we did anticipate an increase of about six point three one percent in our rever, in our revenues. That amounts to almost ten and a half million dollars. In terms of the increases that we've seen, and what we do, and what we've always done is use three-year blended averages so that we're conservative in our estimates. As City Manager mentioned, um, that seventy, seven point one percent, uh, I'm sorry, seven point one million dollar increase in our sales taxes. That was due to a one-time audit revenue, but we have seen some increases still outside of that as we move into, as we end F Y twenty-three in terms of our, uh, sales tax revenue. But just to make the point, in terms of general property taxes. That, um, overall increase, which it, it counts for some of the decreases that we receive. Yes, we receive increases in our pers, in our real property taxes, personal property taxes, but our motor vehicle, the old birthday tax, that continues to decline every year. So that's, it's really about a one, one and a half percent, one point five, one point five four percent increase that we're projecting in our revenue estimates from F Y twenty-three to F Y, um, twenty-four. We anticipate an eight percent increase in our franchise, um, tax revenue. Um, that, that includes, um, the Georgia Power franchise tax, the, the franchise tax that we collect from the waterworks from Li, Liberty Util, Utilities. There's been some discussion here in prior months about, you know, some of the, um, bills that some of the residents are receiving for the, uh, Liberty, uh, from your Liberty Utility. So we do anticipate increases, um, in our franchise, um, tax revenue, um, for that. As far as our sales tax revenue, we do anticipate an eight and a half percent increase in our sales tax revenue. Again, sales taxes are a volatile source of revenue. Um, it's not something that we would, uh, ever max out, because the sales taxes that we collect, again, depends on market conditions. The market declines from a sales, uh, standpoint, then that would be a reduction, uh, that we would see in our sales tax revenue. And so, but we did include in the budget an eight and a half percent increase in our t, sales tax revenue. Some of the other taxes, um, you know, in terms of our, our business taxes and, um, some of those other taxes associated with the business taxes, about five, uh, point eight eight percent increases that we're, we're seeing in that, in those revenue sources. So property tax revenue, I mean, and that's just, you know, example, that there are some tax revenues that we've not yet seen recover, um, some of it as it relates to, um, our fines and forfeitures. You know, we, as the court system continues to adjudicate, uh, cases. We anticipate that we'll, you know, eventually see some increase in that, but that hasn't been a source that has really recovered. I mean, we budgeted in our F Y, um, twenty-three budget, two point six million dollars in fines and forfeitures. In F Y twenty-two, we only collected two point one. And so we held it the same, again, because we are seeing those cases, um, sort of move through the court system. And so we included in the budget, again, another two point six million, and hopefully, you know, um, we'll reach that, um, for F Y twenty-four. So, but, um, property tax revenue, just as a whole, you know, the digest that we, the increase that we av, advertised last year was about seven percent. And we only are ex, uh, experiencing about a two percent increase that the city can actually utilize. So, you know, what is advertised in the newspaper as far as the total digest is just a much different number than what we actually receive. There are lots of, um, TAD projects going on, um, some commitments that we have in, in, in terms of the TAD. So it's not a situation where we'd be able to, you know, count that TAD revenue as city revenue at any point in the future. I mean, any point, anytime soon.
Okay. Councilor Davis.
Thank you, Mayor. I think you, again, I say it's extremely important to initiate this conversation today. And the last time the, the tax assessor was, Chief Tax Assessor was here, I think she brought us the news about the increase in the tax digest. I asked the question, based on the assumption, what we budget, probably as long as I've been on council, we budget about two percent every year increase in, in the tax digest. And then, uh, after all that, after we approve the budget, usually we get the news about the, the increase in the tax digest, sometimes earlier. But I asked the question, the difference between, uh, two and twelve, and it was stated ten million dollars. I don't know where that's gonna end up after all the appeals, I asked that question too. So, when you look at that, there's, there's money that's being collected there. Not to the tune of nine hundred thousand, but as I talked about, ten million. And it does equate to new revenue. Look, there's, we've had the conversation with software and the human element of implementing in the tax assessor's office responsibility. The other side of the equation is this body, which relates to millage, or how that revenue is gonna be spent and incorporated in, in the budget. It's very, very hard, uh, uh, it, it, look, if new revenue is coming in, and the reserves are growing in the last three years, they've, they've grown a lot. Then you've got the option to adjust those valuations that we've talked about through reducing the millage. And, uh, you know, we do a lot of economic incentives in the community, we, we do a lot of that, but, you know, when are we gonna do it for the citizens, you know, and incorporate an economic incentive for the citizens? That would be in the form of reducing the millage. I don't, you know, I can cherry pick numbers today if we really wanna reduce the millage. But that would be irresponsible, that would be financial irresponsible on my part. Because I don't think we've done enough strategic planning. I don't think we've done, uh, uh, enough, uh, projecting. Uh, I, I know the city has liabilities, I know the city has encumbrances, I know there's some things on the future. But, and I know about the pay plan that we just implemented, and we're fixing to implement a maintenance aspect of twenty twenty-four. That's coming up today. But I can't tell you how that's gonna impact, pack next year's number. As far as what's gonna be in the fund balance where we store everything, but that's accumulation of both the general fund and the OLOS and, and pennies. I do know that we've been collecting a lot of revenue from the pennies. That's what keeps and sustains this government. Uh, it really does when you break it down. But when you're bringing in a tremendous amount of money and that's growing, and you're not spending it, you can either do one thing, you can lower the millage, or you can put it back in the infrastructure. You know, that's giving it back to the citizens. And, and certainly, you'd be in a situation where, in the future, as the Finance Director said, if you needed more money, you'd just have to build the case that you're gonna have to increase the millage. That conversation needs to be had, we don't, we don't have that enough. We always tell the citizens, and it's true, we, we haven't gone up on taxes, as long as I've been here, we haven't gone up on taxes. I think on debt service, I will say a debt service, but it's usually balanced a little bit. But more and more revenue every year has come in, and especially in the last three years. I said earlier, before that, we, we've been fighting that sixty-day market, actually went the other way. I can't, uh, it's an anomaly because the rest of the nation's doing this, you know, and we're struggling down here. But recently, we're, we're moving in a, in a different direction. I, I can't sit here and make those projections. I can cherry pick amounts of money and say, let's just roll the millage back in X. But I don't even know what the appeals, how it's gonna turn out with the appeals. I don't know what that's gonna equate to yet. So, I, I think from a council standpoint, this is something that we need to continue to discuss because it's real, and our citizens are now communicating to us. And we in turn are, are trying to address it. But I, I think the important thing is, it, without really understanding the obligations and some of these things that we've discussed across the board that we know are gonna equate to future costs, it's hard to, it's hard to, uh, to just sit here and, I, you know, and pick a number and just lower it. But then the other thing, the other thing that nobody talks about is you got the school district over there too. And that's a whole different ballgame over there when you talk about their millage and their debt service. So when you do it in a combination of both, do you look at various factors within the budget that you've got money, can you break it, can you pull from all these to total to reduce the millage along with the school district? Yeah, you could do that. But that conversation, I think, really needs to be had, and, you know, that's our responsibility. So, I, I mean, that's where we're at today. I, I can't, I, I can't, on this reading, with what I know right now. Cause a lot of these numbers that come in after the fact, do some kind of a motion today. But I think we need to continue to have this conversation, and maybe going through this period and then understanding the appeals process. And then looking at, I, I, I'd like to have more strategic planning projections of, uh, where these liabilities are, and obligations are gonna be, be in the future. We don't have that as a council. And again, that would be irresponsible to, to do something. But you could, and then turn around and make the case to the citizens. But a lot of, a lot of my colleagues don't wanna do that because they think it's gonna be extremely difficult to go back up on the, on the millage. Well, I, I, I tend to believe if, i, if you're collecting a lot of money, then you can give it back in a couple of ways, or you're gonna have to build a good case that you need the money and you raise the millage. The other side of that, the, the other part of this conversation is that I think we're about getting to the point that we're gonna have to relook at these urban service districts. And, um, we haven't done that in a long, long time. And there's some people, you know, South Columbus comes to my mind, you know, they're in Urban Service District One. There's other areas that we've had a tremendous amount of growth, and they're in Urban Service District Two. They're being taxed at different millage rates. And if we're, say we're trying to accomplish goals in our community, which I stated earlier in our, you know, in our conversation, was poverty, or affordable housing, or you know, the, the helping people, incentivize people. Those things are gonna have to be addressed, Mr. City Manager, Mr. Mayor, you got to deal with that. And those, any initiatives that are out there are not gonna address that unless this body starts understanding that. And I don't know what that is yet. But with the citizens coming to us and communicating their concerns, living in our community and trying to do business and make a living, and it's stre, it's, it's extremely stressful and challenging. That should be a concern because unless we have a lot of jobs on the horizon. that should be a concern because unless we have a lot of jobs on the horizon and people lining up with more purchasing dollars, we lose them. You know, your community starts declining. I don't want to see that, but it's got to be understood from that standpoint. So that's going to have to be discussed. It really is. And, and I'd like, I'd make a commitment to the citizens on my behalf, and I've said this before, that I would look at ways of reducing the millage if we could satisfy healthcare, retirement and the pay plan. We've done some of those things. But there's also a concern of a continued growing of the government as well. Those are management issues and those got to be addressed in management and managing your budget. And, you know, these are, this is just a, you know, a continuing conversation that must take place in the coming months. So I, I would hope that my fellow colleagues would be open to that and that we can discuss that because, you know, it's a valid point that we, we need to, we need to take a look at that if, if we need to adjust the millage rate and the Urban Service Tax Districts.
And, Mr. Mayor, I, I do concur that we need to have additional conversation and, and do agree that, and, and want you to know that I have staff right now looking at Urban Service Districts. We started to look at that several years ago, if you remember. And, and then we kind of put it on pause. But they are, we are looking at Urban Service Districts. It's a fact that we have, and, and I'll say it's in Green Island. On one side of the street, they're in Urban Service District One. And when they go out to the mailbox, they're looking across the street at their neighbor getting their mail out the same box, at the mailbox at the same time. And that neighbor is in Urban Service District Two. But there's no difference in the service levels. And not just there in Green Island, I just point to an example there, and that's a fact. That is a fact. And, but it's in other areas where Urban Service District One and Urban Service District Two is the difference. They're same street address, they're just on the other side of the street. And so that is something that we are looking at. But we do need to have additional conversation about the things that you've mentioned, Counselor Davis.
Thank you. Counselor Thomas?
Mr. Mayor, we, we've now been at this for an hour and a half. And this was advertised as a taxpayer bill of rights to give the public an opportunity to express their opinion on the increase in rate. And I know that when the city attorney first opened his agenda, he asked if there was anyone in the audience that wanted to say anything. I would ask that we do that again. These folks have been sitting here now for an hour and a half, listening to all of this. And there may be some of them that would like to address the council. One of the other issues that I am, excuse me, I am concerned about, and I don't know if this is set by state law or if this is something that we can do. But we have, we are required by law to have three taxpayer bill of rights meetings. And what we have done in the, this year and in the past is that this is the third one of those. And then later on this agenda is the action to approve the millage rate and all that. That does not give us as counselors the opportunity, excuse me, to have some conversation with each other, with other people. And I don't know if we can, in the future, have a third reading, I mean, a third meeting and then not take up the actual action until the next meeting or whatever. I don't know if that's set by state law or what. But I do want to be sure that we give those citizens that are here, that have come, that after having heard all of this for the last hour and a half, if there is anyone that would like to speak, Mr. City Attorney, I'd like to hear from them.
Yeah, we had, we had every intention of letting them know again because sometimes when the conversation gets going, it brings up some ideas or thoughts. But we will absolutely do this. We have another counselor that's been waiting. Counselor Tucker?
I can wait until after, if a citizen wants to speak.
Okay. All right.
Let's see if there's anybody in the audience that wants to be heard. Ms. Diker, come on up. Then we've got one more after, after Ms. Diker will get you and the lady.
If you would, just state your name and address.
My name's John Diker and I'm going to speak in reference to thirty-eight twelve Casita Road. I think this dialogue has been very good and we need to have more of this dialogue. I have a lot of questions about appraisals and experiences and stories to share. But I think the one thing that stands out to me is I'm very appreciative of the comments to, to keep in mind where we are as a community and how we can move forward. And, and on price elasticity for a business, there comes a threshold where you overprice yourself and the market starts to leave. And I think as a business owner that somewhat is in recession already is realizing that, you know, I've got to stop spending. I might have to borrow cash because I can't raise my price or I lose more customers and it gets harder. And that's where I may be in my, in my business right now. So I think as a, as a body, we should take our time and be considerate of not only our budget and how we're spending, but also our tax rate to our customers, our citizens. I believe that the city manager is concerned about two years ahead and our Finance Director, they have good reason to be concerned because we do have a lot of things that we're chasing in cost. We must spend some money to catch up and be good stewards and be smart. But we, you know, our revenues have gone up tremendously. And now our appraisals are going up and our taxes are going up. What we have to do is look at the bottom of the bucket and see what things that we have to be tighter on in our budget. And the best way to do that is not to say, well, let's, let's max out our tax rate and let's move forward and collect all this money and spend it today. We'll be better stewards tomorrow. Now, the better way to do it today, in my opinion, a solution that I'm offering, would be to do what, what I do sometimes, and that is go borrow money, take it from the fund, do it from the reserve, whatever you've got to do to shore up those things. Because next year, and give the customers the rollback millage rate. So if we're not going to talk about appraisals and it is what it is, and I would like to spend more time talking about private equity coming in, raising the rates, and, and tell my stories of appraisals, which I will spend with, with the professionals in the tax office. But if we're not going to talk about appraisals, we, we are talking about budget and we are talking about millage rate. And I like the word strategy. What are we going to do tomorrow? The best way to do that, the solution is to me, is, is to continue the dialogue, go to reserves, pull the money, give the customers the millage rollback rate. Let's come back together as a community next year with a strategy and say, well, instead of borrowing ten million, we went back and we borrowed twenty million. We lowered the millage rate and we're going to start working today on next year's ways that we're going to make adjustments. That's all I have to say. I've been very pleased with the dialogue. I appreciate all of this. Thank you.
Thanks, sir.
All right. Ma'am, you.
I think the gentleman in front was second.
Okay.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Good morning, Mayor.
He states your name and your address, please, sir.
Uh, City Manager and Council. My name is Donald Hicks. I'm a retired individual. I have a few parcels in Columbus and one, well, two parcels in particular. I have four, four, four twentieth Avenue. I have had constant communication with the tax assessor since the purchase of that. The minute I purchased it, they act like I had purchased some gold out there on Casita Road in front of the county, one of the worst areas in Columbus. I contested the increase in the taxes. And I also presented the tax assessors also with my appraisal from Connecticut Credit Union. And I went and picked it up on my banker, hand-delivered it to the office. They received it and they lied to me and told me, oh, we don't have it. They increased my tax value to five hundred thousand dollars. They increased it. Now, I just recently went before the Board of Equalization. They reduced it to three sixty-seven. But I've, I've been fighting with the mayor since twenty fourteen when I purchased it. They found out that I had another parcel at four, one old Brown Avenue. It's a warehouse. And when I first bought it in twenty-ten, I paid ninety-nine thousand for it. The city increased the value to nine hundred and twenty-four dollars and ninety-nine-nine-five. That's what they increased, increased the value. I picked the phone up and I called to the tax assessors office and I explained to them. I said, what happened? I just purchased it in December. I said, what happened to the value between December and one month? But they increased it. So about a month later, they called me back and told me they made a mistake and they reduced the taxes to four, four thousand or something. But now recently, they've gone up to seven thousand. First, you went to twelve thousand. And when I went to the meeting, they reduced it to seven. That's still twice what I've been paying. The building is in a state of repair. I presented my plant work to the tax office. I invited the tax office out to my warehouse. I would also like to invite you all out to my warehouse and let you see the conditions it's in. I should be paying the amount of money I'm paying. I am more or less supporting the building right now. With repair, plumbing, I repaired one section of a roof already. I have another section, two more sections I need to repair. I cannot do any repairs on this building and paying the amount of taxes that they are asking me and supporting my household and my regular business interests. I maintained the property that I had with a little increase, but doubling it, it was too expensive. Now, Mrs. Suzanne here mentioned that she used property appraisals and comparables. I have had the assistance of Matt Morfield. I knew his daddy real well and he helped me out on, on my property value. I went to a, a meeting at the Board of Assessors in twenty-twenty-one. They use comparables, Stark Avenue. That's right there on Wind Road, about at Elementary. They use comparables, historical district. Has nothing to do with four, four, four twentieth Avenue. I presented them comparables that was comparable to the neighborhood that I live in. Jimmy McCarlo has a whole lot of units around there. Truman Realz has units around there. I presented those parcels to them. And they continuously, they came back with eight, eight air avenue, a million dollar sale. The individual, what they did on eight air avenue, he was cashing out. He has abandoned the property. They also used a five hundred thousand dollar sale on a Laverne property on Casita Road, right there at exit one for the new Sistrum, that's it, for the soccer stadium. And I mentioned to them in the meeting, I said, that's speculative investment. They're going to put a service station there. I said, it has nothing to do with my property at four, four, four twentieth Avenue. Still didn't do no good. I have had no cooperation with this office at all. When I come to visit them, Miss Suzanne here came out one day with a blowhorn, one of those megaphones, standing up, talking to me with a megaphone in her hand. And I even asked her, I said, what's, what's the megaphone for? She has not answered me today. And the last phone call I had to her, she mentioned to me that I was sitting on two million dollars for property and then she hung up. I have been mistreated by this office. I thank you all to take another look at the head of this department over there because they have no concern. I have cooperated, I gave them my P and L statement. I gave them my tax statement. I gave them everything they asked for. And they just led me on for all those years. That, that's my experience with this tax office. And again, I'll invite all of you all out to my building and take a look at it, the conditions of it. And I can't continue to repair and pay out, pay the taxes that they are trying to gouge out of. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hicks.
Hey, ma'am, come on up.
If you would, give your name and your address, please.
Good morning, everyone.
Hello.
Excuse me, just, excuse me, just a minute. Counselor Huff?
Yeah, I had had a conversation a few months ago. So if we could get him some assistance to work through your office and work through this. He showed me all the comparables and everything a few months ago. I was out in the neighborhood on some other business and stopped by and we had a conversation. So if we could get somebody, staff here, Mr. City Manager, somebody to work through the office and help him with the situation.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
My name is Yolanda Hunter. I live at six, five, one Southern Pines Drive. The problem that I have is there's a house behind the house, my house. And there's also a ditch. And the property owner, they claim they can't find him. But he recently, when it came up time to pay the property taxes, they could not find this particular person. Then finally, he came and paid the property tax. But the problem I have is that the yard looks like a jungler. It's so bad that even understanding the property, oh, my property is facing that and it's, the water is running out the ditch and it floods my basement and it has torn up some stuff in my house. And not only that, I also have a property on Lawyer's Lane, which the property tax on that particular property has gone up. And I got the bill and it jumped up and they were saying that the house was worth forty thousand dollars. And I don't see that because there's another house next door and it's demolished. And we put a dog over there to keep somebody from tearing up the guy that owns the house because he's got to go to way of a court and all that to try and take care of it. I've called him and talked to him about it. But my concern is when I talked to the city guy, he told me that the only thing that they could do was cut the front of that particular property over there by my house. But they couldn't do nothing to the back. Well, the back looked like a forest back there, all the trees and bushes and it even grown on my fence that I just had to put up another fence there.
Hicks, we need to get you, we need to get your information and, and let us get our codes of inspection folks to check that out because that should not be like that now.
Well, I did have your code inspection person come out there and he was the one that told me that.
We'll, we'll try to get your name and number and follow up with you because I think this hearing right now is for the millage rate rollback and the assessment of the digest. So we need to get you some help. If, Mr. City Manager, if you could get somebody, get her name and number and see if we can figure out what's going on. Okay, all right. Well, she, she's on public agenda. Well, you can, you can come back at public agenda. This is, this is a first reading for the, for the millage. This is, this is a first reading for the, for the millage rates. Yeah. And, and you can, right, and that. And, and that, you can, you can appeal that. You can get to the tax assessor's office and they'll walk you through the appeal process.
And I understand, the guy came out there and looked at the property, but he never talked to me. He talked to my son and my son told him, said, you need to talk to my mother.
Yeah, yeah, I, I understand.
So I didn't know who I needed to talk to and that's why I came to this meeting this morning.
And I think you start with the tax assessor's office, through that appeal process. And if you still are not satisfied, I think you can go through Superior Court.
Board of Equalization.
I misspoke, Board of Equalization.
Okay.
So you have some, you have some avenues that you can take. And we'll check on the other piece as well with regard to the, to the grass needs being cut.
Yes, sir.
All right.
Thank you so much. Y'all be blessed.
Yes, ma'am, thank you.
All right, anybody else in the audience want to speak on the taxpayer bill of rights hearing, tentative millage rates? We'll have another hearing in just a minute when we get to the first reading of the millage rate.
We had a comment from Council Tucker.
Yes, it's been a lot discussed today and I agree with Counselor Davis. I know we've been mentioning meetings and Counselor Barnes had made a comment in reference to doing a parks and rec meeting, the last meeting. I think we have a lot that we need to discuss. August has five Tuesdays. And I'm requesting that on August 29th, that we have during our work session, an area for council to have a section on the agenda where we can actually determine what it is that, you know, we need to address. Meaning, I know Counselor Begley wants to talk about the budget process. We mentioned public safety, parks and rec, urban service districts, integrated waste, and even some sales tax trends. But I do think that we've thrown out strategic planning a lot. And we also talked about doing something with ACCG, the retreats. But if we could kind of get a head start on that.
Sure, we can, we can, we can do either or both. Because we've, we've talked with y'all about, and I think it's a great idea to have a day or even a two-day retreat and bring in somebody to facilitate it and then get the categories ahead of time from council specifically about what y'all think are the most critical issues you want to talk about. We can, we can present that, do it over a couple of days. And that way, everybody will have an opportunity to, to kind of get their issues addressed.
Okay. And I just had one question from a citizen. They had, they were watching and they sent a text message in reference to the, the revenue.
Mr. Mayor, before we leave the work session, could I?
Yes, do you mind?
Yeah, that's fine.
Counselor Tucker, I would suggest too that as counselors, if there are specific topics that we know we want to have discussed, that we send them to the clerk of council and let her put them on the agenda so we'll have something and not just, you know, we'll have time to prepare and, and have some real conversations. So I'd make that suggestion that we send our topics to the clerk to go on the agenda if that's acceptable to you.
Do you want to do like the top five so we don't get bogged down? You know, we've been talking about our council meetings where we have way too many things to discuss. Do you want to, we send it, send it, send in our suggestions and then kind of, you know, rank them in the top five?
Yeah, however we want to do it, I just want to be able to prepare before we come on the topic and see what, you know, what kind of conversation we need to have. And because we want to do this, it may be that the city manager and the mayor and the city attorney, whoever puts together the rest of that agenda, recognizes that we want to have these conversations and so there's not a lot of other stuff on that, on that work session.
Exactly.
Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. And Pops wanted to say something in reference to that.
Are you through?
No, not.
Okay, will you?
I have one.
Why don't you go ahead?
No, you go ahead.
Just go ahead.
Okay. In reference to the fund balance with the individual just asked, because we've been saying budget, 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 was are all the unfilled positions included in the, how many days we have this? Is it 105 now, 108? For this?
109.
109, okay. Are the unfilled positions actually included when we talk about fund balance? Is that all the positions, even like some of the OLS positions with like CPD? How, how, how is the makeup of that, that total that we have in our fund balance? Like what, what did, so let me, let me break it down. How much is a day? And also are there unfilled positions included in, in that amount?
So the value of a day for FY '24 is $600,509. In terms of what's included in the budget, right? There are some positions that the funding has already, some unfunded positions in both, in, in public safety and in some general government departments. So that has already been taken into consideration as far as the budget is concerned.
Okay. And with, with that, once we come, because I think you said November? Well, what's the, what's the date that you come back? Well, the month or whatever that you come back to show us what salary savings that we had?
That's usually in December.
It's in December.
Once we get through the audit, we do the final budget amendment typically in December.
So I guess the reason why that question came about is because we were talking about revenue sources and how the fund balance kind of coincides with revenue sources. And we mentioned, I think, before that salary savings go back into the general fund? Is that how that works?
It goes back into the reserve, so to speak, of whatever fund that that savings was generated in. But I will say salary savings that for FY '23, in terms of the 109 number, what we anticipate we'll see in salary savings from FY '23 and as we end the fiscal year in two weeks, that's already calculated in the 109 number.
Okay. So I guess that'd be a good thing to visually see. That was all. Thank you.
Councilor Barnes?
I think your suggestion, Judy's, is a good one. But what I would like for us to do, because there are so many topics, parks and rec could take up hours. So that we limit, and first of all, I'm glad that you're, we're routing things through the clerk of council. I think that's the orderly way to do it. But I would suggest that we not stockpile. We would get wrapped around the wheel on so many things because all of us have our opinions and we have so many concerns of various constituency that we just limit our topics to maybe three or something, or you said five, but I think that we need to.
I was giving grace.
Pair that bear boy down to about three so that we can actually chew on these things and come up with something resolvable.
Well, and I think too, the, the retreat, let council kind of leave their cell phones behind, get together for a full day or a day and a half. And that way, you can dive deeper. I know, it's going to be tough for some of you. We'll collect them when you come in. But, but just some way to keep everybody there, present and focused. And that way, we can cover a wide range of topics to try to get them, get them done. You'll survive. All right? And I think that's, that's all for the.
Yeah, we need to close this hearing.
Mr. Hicks, did you have something regarding the ordinance? Is this about your personal property or is it about? Come on up, we're still in the first reading.
We're still in the taxpayer bill of rights hearing, Mayor. We need to close that.
I recently had a, had a visit with the Board of Equalization. And after we left out of the meeting and went downstairs to the office, I was told, I wasn't told in the meeting, that the market value comps are 299C freeze. And that meant that I could not appeal until three years. This is my first appeal on 401. They blindsided me. They, they put a 299C freeze on that property. So they're compelling me to pay that, those taxes for three years. And I don't think that's fair. I should have been, should have been explained to me in the meeting, should have been discussed. When they, when she handed me the paper, it was already on there, 299C freeze, my first appeal. And that is not fair.
All right, Mr. Hicks, thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am, if you would, there's a number of, I think.
Yeah, but if I could just clarify what a 299C freeze is. What that is, is that is a code section that says that the value is frozen as a result of an appeal for that year and two subsequent years. It does not mean a taxpayer is not allowed to appeal the next year. They can in fact appeal the next year. They also have the right, coming out of a Board of Equalization hearing, to, if they disagree with the decision of a Board of Equalization decision, they have 30 days to decide whether they would like to continue that appeal to Superior Court. So that 299C does not mean they're not allowed to continue an appeal or to appeal the next year. It just means that we're not allowed to adjust their value for that year and two subsequent years unless they decide to appeal.
Thank you, ma'am.
Okay, anybody else on the taxpayer bill of rights hearing? We're going to close that third hearing out under Title 48.
Councilor Huff?
Madam Tax Assessor, if you could explain that last statement, that was kind of redundant. If it's stamped on there that he, it's frozen.
Yes, it's, it's an appeal.
And you say for that year and two subsequent years, he can appeal. What is he appealing if it's frozen?
Well, here's, here's the thing. Maybe he decided it wasn't worth going on to Superior Court, as an example. He had, he appealed his value. I'm going to do a hypothetical here for you. So taxpayer comes in, he appeals his value. We review the property. He's not happy with our change, says, I want to go to the Board of Equalization. So he goes on to the Board of Equalization. The Board of Equalization makes a decision. He can do two things. He can accept that decision for that year and in which case, we apply what's called the 299C freeze. And that's based off of Code Section 48.5 299C. That's the actual code section, that's why we call it a 299C. And what that code section says is that if there is an adjudication of value as a result of an appeal, that taxpayer's value is frozen for the purposes of the tax assessor's office for that year and two subsequent years. But maybe the next year, he's like, I don't like that value. I didn't take it to Superior Court, but I still don't like that value. Something has changed, the neighborhood's gone down, I want to appeal my value again. He has every right to come in and appeal that value again. He can appeal that frozen value.
But why would the board change if they put it in place already?
We, we wouldn't. What I'm saying is, is he can appeal that frozen value.
I know, but he's just appealing. What, what, what changes would come about? If you have a year and two subsequent years already in place, what is he appealing to get? What kind of relief will he get?
He can appeal it, we'll take another look at the property. Maybe something's happened. Maybe there's something happens to the property where while it was frozen under that appeal freeze and he wants to, he wants to go ahead and appeal it again, he can't. There's, I mean, we have people who literally will come in and they will appeal their property every single year, even though it's already under a freeze.
Well, there could be some change in sales data. There could have been.
True, that too.
A handful of sales that took place that year that might adjust or might make a difference. But the bottom line is.
I was trying to figure out why would the board go back on a decision they made?
We, well, we would.
It seems like he's appealing just to be appealing, but he's not going to get any relief for three years.
Depends on if there's been any changes to the market. I mean, there's, there is an opportunity that there could have been some, some sales data.
The law says that, I mean, maybe, here's, here's the thing. With that appeal freeze in place, maybe the market's continuing to go up. With that appeal freeze in place, we're not allowed to adjust that value up. So that value is locked in for the year that he appealed and two subsequent years. That's what the law says. So we are not allowed to change that value. If he appeals, then he opens up the door for us to make an adjustment. But that, he has to, he has to open that door by filing an appeal when it's under a freeze.
Okay, thanks. All right, thank you. Mr. Hicks, we can't, we're not going to go back and forth on one parcel, sir. That wouldn't be, wouldn't be fair to the others that are here. All right?
All right, that concludes the hearing required under Title 48.5 32.1. Mayor, the three taxpayer bill of rights have been held. We do have a first reading on our millage rate in just a minute. And that will be another hearing if there are any questions or comments. But we've got a long agenda, Mayor, to get through. Did you have anything else on your agenda?
We need to address the minutes from the July, June 13th meeting. Motion second, we'll see them. All in favor, say aye. Any votes? All right, now, Mr. City Attorney, it's your agenda.
All right, we'll head down our list of business items. The first one up is a zoning at 6395 Sawman Road.
All right, there's a motion second to approve the Sawman Road petition. Any discussion? Chris Q. it, please. Counselors, ready to your votes? Missing a few. All right, we've got six positive votes. That's it, okay.
That has passed.
That's passed.
That's the Duncan petition that's passed. Next one up is 5335 Miller Road.
Motion second to approve the Miller Road petition. Any discussion? Hearing none, Chris Q. it. Counselors, you can vote. And that's approved.
All right. The next item for a vote is the Talboton Road, 910 Talboton.
Motion second to approve the Talboton Road initiative. All in, anybody have any comments on it? Hearing none, Chris, you can cue it.
Is anybody on virtual, Mayor?
There is not, to my knowledge. We're still two votes shy. Okay, it passes.
That's approved. Then 6700, 6708 Green Island Drive is ready for adoption.
Motion second to approve item four. Any discussion? Chris Q. it, please, sir. Thank you. All right, and that's approved.
All right, then the conservation use valuation assessment grouping is ready for approval. This is residential estate, five and 10.
There's motion second to approve. Any discussion of that item? Hearing none, Chris Q. it. Counselors.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, ma'am. Let me get back. Chris, can you turn her light on, please? I don't have control over it from this panel. There we go.
The, the written on here says a district known as the Conversation. That should be conservation, right?
Yes, it should.
Correct.
Leave it to the English teacher we've got.
Okay. We've had a lot of conversation, but.
But no conservation of words, is what you say.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, ma'am, thank you.
All right, that has passed. Then we've got the budget, this is the operating budget, capital improvement for FY '24. It is on second reading and ready for a vote. But is there any further comment around the table? Okay.
There's a motion to approve, is there a second? No second on the operating budget. Be kind of tough to provide any services next year.
Well, we need, we need to come back to it if we can't get a second.
Yeah. No second. Okay, well, we'll have to come back to it.
All right, this is a non-operating budget, item seven, for the various funds shown. That's ready for adoption.
There's a motion to approve the non-operating budget. Any, is there a second? Okay.
All right, we'll come back to item seven. Then items eight, nine, ten, eleven, we'll call together again. Pension plan for general government, public safety, disability plan, and death benefit escrow. Those are ready for adoption.
Okay, motion to, is there a motion to adopt the pension benefit plans? All right, motion second. Any conversation to it?
Was that just a number?
Eight, nine, and ten.
Eight, nine, ten, and eleven.
All right, all those in favor of eight, nine, ten, and eleven, please say aye. Any opposed? All right, they're approved.
Okay, those have passed. Second reading on the low-income household offset solid waste collection is ready for adoption.
Move approval.
Motion second to move item twelve. Any discussion? Hearing none, Chris cue that, please. All right, that's approved.
That's passed. Then Mayor Pro Tem, do you want to make a motion to delay one week the personal transportation vehicle?
Yes, Counselor Coke will ask this be delayed a week till she can be, she'll be back. And so I so move.
Motion and a second to delay. All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? All right, it's delayed.
All right, bring that back on the next week's meeting. Now we have the first reading on the millage rate ordinance. This is for three urban service districts, three business improvement districts. Our U.S. District, Urban Service District One, proposed at seventeen point five one mills. It's up for discussion.
All right, Counselor Thomas.
This, this is approving the millage rate. It is not, there's a question mark at the end of this. This is not approving the tax assessor notices that went out. Is that, is that a correct statement? This is just approving the, that the millage rate will be.
Well, this is a first reading only, you'll vote next week. But this is setting your millage rates for each taxing district. You've got three urban service districts. I think it's one, two, and four, maybe, and then three business improvement districts. So this will be voted on next time, but it's the actual millage rate that will be applied for your tax bills.
Okay, doesn't appear to be more comments.
All right.
Anybody in the audience? No, it's just.
Anybody want to be heard in the audience? Proposed millage rate. Okay, we'll vote on that next week, mayor.
Okay.
The next item, number fifteen, is the ordinance for the levy and collection of the school system millage rate. Request of Muskogee County School District for twenty-three point three two one mills. They will finalize that next week, but that's the projected rate. So any questions on that? All right. And we've got a first reading on the pay plan, Evergreen Solutions, classification adjustments. Any discussion on that? Ms. Halliwell, she's here.
I want to make sure, Mr. City Manager, I have had at least two phone calls from employees who went through the process and went through the final appeal. They were denied. This, this, though, is the last step, right? They don't have another, another appeal, is that correct?
Mayor, that would be correct unless council decide they want to create another step.
But at this point.
At this point, this would be the final step.
This is it.
Because they've gone through the process, they made an appeal to Evergreen and went through a process. And then they came back and we opened the process again, that it could come to the city manager. We've completed that process.
And so this, this is the final step?
Yes, that would be correct.
In all of that? So if someone still is not, if they're not satisfied with their placement, can they appeal next year?
This would be the final appeal for this situation. They could probably come to council, they could come to you and stand there at the podium and, and it would be whatever you decide.
Okay, I think I got it, thank you.
Yeah.
Counselor Davis.
Yeah, Mr. City Managers, this, this is going into twenty twenty-four. So would this be the new plan, the, with the maintenance included into the?
Yes, sir.
Okay, that's what I was talking about earlier. Do we have those reflected, do we know what those numbers are right now as far as increases? And is that, the, the increases in the, which would be the changes in the pay plan, are those based on a hundred percent employment or current employment?
That's a finance question. So when we, if, so he, he's asked a question. The number that you've included in the budget to fully implement the pay plan for the fiscal year twenty-four, is that based on the total positions? Or is it based on people currently employed with vacancies?
Well, the, as far as I understand it, I was not in the appeal process, but.
No, 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 for the pay plan, total pay plan.
For the total pay plan is for the entire year.
Yeah.
For that particular position. Well, and for the appeals for that individual, because you had to be in a position to appeal it.
Can, can you just get us something in writing that lets us know the, from twenty-three to twenty-four, the changes, the amounts?
Yes.
You know, how that's being factored as far as the changes.
Yes.
Because it is, you know, council needs to know, it's a, it's a step in maintenance.
Right.
That we've committed to.
That's right, the one percent.
Yes.
Yeah. We, we can get, we'll break the numbers down.
Okay.
Thank you.
Yes, sir. Counselor Crabbe.
You included the one percent maintenance for the pay plan.
Yes.
And, yeah, it's all there. We will break it down and bring it back to them.
And that's already been included in.
Yes.
The budget that we would pass.
That you're, that's on the table right now.
I just need to see those amounts.
Yes.
Thank you.
Were the employees that were not happy with the appeal results, given the offer, given the information about this first reading and given the opportunity to appear and respond at the first reading?
I don't think that was part of the process of explaining the appeal process. I think the ended at the city manager.
Yeah, I think, if I, excuse me, the H.R. Director explained our process. And then, of course, I told them all that it would be on the agenda in, at the end of June. So, I mean, we didn't contact every person to say it's on Tuesday's agenda.
Do they understand what it being on the agenda in the first reading, that their rights to come before this body about that, before the second?
As, as Counselor Thomas said, the city managers, that process, it ended with the city manager, and that's where it ends, unless you add another step, such as you can now come to council. Then that would be different than what was outlined as the appeal, final appeal process.
Well, isn't the general rule that anybody can appear before this body on a first reading and speak to us?
Or they can come anytime. An employee can just.
I'm not, I'm not talking, I mean, I'm talking about, employees are employees, but they're also citizens. And so they do have a right to come before this body on a first reading.
Well, they can come on a first read or a public agenda, depending on what the topic is.
So do we?
I'm just throwing that out there for, for.
We can certainly add another step if you want to add that step, where they now get to come to council. And we can just set aside time on the agenda to let those who were denied come and talk, they can get on the agenda.
I'm not, I'm not saying that I'm for that or against that. I'm just, I'm just bringing it up to see if, I just want to make sure that they, they have been listened to and that they have been, I mean, and I'm not saying that they haven't been. But I'm just, you know, educating them on their rights as citizens, you know, to come to us and at first reading. So that's all I was, I was just bringing that to everyone's attention.
And, and I'm saying, Mr. Mayor, if council members want me to block a time on my agenda.
No, I, I think, I think it's the same kind of process. I mean, just like department heads, I think they know that they could, as citizens, come and make a, a comment at first reading of the budget, because they're impacted by the budget. But that's, it's not typically the way it flows. I think all of them understood that it was a, it was a lot of different stopoffs on that, on that road to a final decision. And, and I, I, I think it was decided that city managers are the last, last line of defense for them to try to get through, and a lot of them were approved. But I understand what you're saying. We didn't, I don't think we hand, you know, held their hand, told them, hey, you can still go for first reading. But they shouldn't, they should know, just like the department heads do, that first reading's open to everybody. So you're, I mean, you're right. All right? I think that's it.
Okay, no other questions on that item? Then our last item on the business list, mayor, is amending Section three dash fifteen point two to establish an entertainment district at Midland Commons. This is up for discussion.
I know Mr. Whitman's here, if there's any questions. I don't, I don't see any questions. Mayor Pro Tem?
I just want to say for the record that I, I have not heard from anyone opposing this. So I just wanted to make that clear. But I appreciate Mr. Whitman being here, too. Thank you, mayor.
And again, the proposed district is highlighted on the attached map, so that'll be part of the record.
Thank you.
Thank you, Chris.
Thank you.
Thanks, sir, we'll vote on that at the next meeting. All right, mayor, the operating budget item and number six and non-operating budgets are still up for discussion, the second reading is still on the table.
All right, do we need another motion? Or can we just carry over the motion that was made and there was no second to it?
No, we, we can get another motion if, in a second, if we have one.
All right, of, of item six. Okay, motion to adopt the operating capital improvement budget for FY twenty-four. Is there a second? Okay. Dice for lack of saying.
And, and Mr. Mayor, I, I was.
Seven dash four zero two in the charter.
Yeah, and, and I think what, what will happen if we don't adopt a budget, you operate on the previous year's budget. I believe that's the case. And you want to read that?
Yes, it says, Section seven dash four zero two, number three, the council shall adopt the final annual operating budget for the ensuing fiscal year, not later than the thirtieth day of June of each year. And such budget shall be effective for the fiscal year beginning on July one. In the event the council failed to operate, I'm sorry, failed to adopt the budget by this date, the amounts appropriated for current operation for the current fiscal year shall be deemed adopted for the ensuing fiscal year on a month-to-month basis.
Okay.
All right, there'll be one more week.
Counselor Crabbe.
One more week, we'll have this on second reading if there's no vote today.
Okay, that's what I was, because it, it did appear that we have one more council meeting before June thirtieth.
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, all right.
And then the non-operating budget is item seven, mayor. If we want to get a motion and or a second.
Is there a motion? All right, is there a second? Bring them both back next week.
We'll bring them both back. That's all we have listed today, mayor.
All right, and the public agenda, Ms. Hunter, I think, left, we have her information, we're gonna follow up with her. Okay. Yes, ma'am.
I can't remember that, that event that we went to at the chamber. And he was talking about addressing the blight to reduce crime. And we do have a lot of blighted areas, and not just blight far as the structures, but exactly what Ms. Hunter was talking about far as the overgrown grass. I think you had mentioned something, I don't know if it was Ryan Pruitt was working on something or you were working on.
We, we have been working with G.I.S. and with Ryan and with police department, because one of the things he came up with, and we've been, this council's done a great job, I think, of being aggressive at, at trying to get rid of blighted properties to remove them as potential gathering points for people doing illicit activities. But we didn't really have a, a planned execution of that. Yeah, so what we're doing is we're working with the police department, we're overlaying through G.I.S. a map that shows the, the houses that are scheduled for demolition. And it's gonna overlay them with the most, the highest crime areas. So we'll, instead of just kind of forming, you know, formulating a, a, a list, we'll be much more intentional, we'll look at those that have attracted the most nuisance first and start with those and work our way down the list, so.
So when you develop that plan, can we also develop a plan where we can ensure that when we tear, when we demolish the properties, that we come up with, with something where we don't create another issue where we have overgrown lots and that attracts, you know, the same level of crime?
Yeah, we can, we can try to see if, if Ryan could come up with a, a sort of a maintenance plan, if you will, of just what happens with those. Because it's, there's so many that have been taken down and, and a lot of the owners are out-of-town owners and they're just out of sight, out of mind. So, but we're, we can become a little more aggressive, I think, as long as we got the manpower to be able to go out and cut those things and then just put a lien on the property.
Yeah, but yeah, we, we actually have a, a lot of those properties where they're overgrown. So I just wanted to make sure that we address that in the, in the plan as well.
Okay.
All right, thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Begley.
I'd also want to mention, I've got my own ideas, some stuff I've been working with. I think we can make it at state level, as well as some local ordinances. I'll, I plan to present that to council in the next month, of kind of my comprehensive plan of how you, yeah, of how you address it.
Okay, thank you. All right, I think that's all on the public agenda. City manager?
Thank you, sir. First, I've got a street acceptance portion of Omaha Drive in yellow paint.
There's a motion to approve, is there a second? All right, motion and second to approve the street acceptance. Any discussion? Chris, please cue it. All right, and that's approved.
The second one has to do with the parking lot, veterans related to the Health Department requesting authorizing the execution of an agreement for the repair.
Motion second to approve parking lot repair. Any, Counselor Crabbe?
Can you just go into what's going on with that parking lot, that we need a repair? We haven't had that building for very long.
Yeah, it really has to do with the adjacent landowner, owner at fifty-five forty-seven Veterans Parkway. They've got a waterland that runs across the parking lot area of the premises. And, and that's according to the easement that we received. And the waterland ruptured, causing damage to the parking lot on the premises. So the city is not required to provide any funding, but it will authorize the repair coming through that parking lot.
Okay. So there is a motion and a second. All right, any? So there is a motion and a second. All right. Any further discussion? All right, Chris, you'll cue it, please. All right, and that's approved.
So the next two are grants. The first one is a ninety thousand dollar integrated waste recycling grant. There's no match.
Motion and a second, approve items three and four. Any discussion to either of those items? All in favor, say aye? Any opposed? All right, if you would, what?
Yeah, the second grant was twenty five thousand five hundred and forty dollars. And there's no match for that grant. And so it's for the purchase of recycling carts and for educational campaign materials for recycling.
All right, Mr. City Attorney?
Just finish that and then I'll go back to item two for a minute.
All right.
Okay, well, they, they've already voted on that.
They've already voted on three and four, so if you want to say something on two, you can.
Yeah, just on item two, Mr. City Manager, the, the resolution that popped up on the E cap has a redundant, now therefore be it resolved clause, if y'all could get, just get that deleted out of there. It's just a typo.
Sure.
Thank you.
And then on purchases, got assessment entity for promotional testing on an as-needed basis for the police department. Requesting your approval.
All right, there's a motion to approve A, B, and C. Is there a second? All right, there is a second. Any discussion to any of those? Yes, ma'am. Which item? We can pull that. Councilor Thomas?
Mr. City Manager, the, on item A, this is the same process. It's just an extension of the contract. Am I right on that? This is not a new company, right?
This is not a, a new company. And we did receive five proposals and and the, and the award, I believe, is a continuation of the same company I asked for finance to verify that.
I think in the agenda report, it does mention that Mark Foster Company is relatively new. However, he worked for UGA for many years and handled CPD testing.
And handled?
Handled the police department testing. So he's familiar with, but he's not, it looks like.
So it's not UGA. He worked with UGA, with our process and started a new company, obviously.
Yes.
Thank you.
All right. Any, any more questions about A, B, or C? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye? Any opposed? All right.
And so B was an August installation and migration plan and support for information technology. It's twenty eight thousand seven hundred and twenty four dollars. And then C, an area energy services and related services for information, with, for information technology, but it's with GIS system. And then did not require action with just a few more purchases. We had some last week. And this first one is a military gator for porch and rec. And it's purchased from Sun South LLC Columbus. It's twenty eight thousand dollars and one is a twenty twenty four GMC Sierra pickup truck for public works. And it is from Glenn Smith Chevrolet in Obalika. Those are the two vehicles that we did purchase. And so I've got two updates. One would be a city hall update. And then we've got the warden here from MCP will follow the city hall update. Herbert Walker will give an MCP update.
Excuse me, City Manager, Councilor Huff had a question.
Yeah, quickly, I just wanted to, clerk of council, please register my votes and affirmative for the city manager's agenda, please. Thank you.
Councilor Begley, did you have your flight on?
Yes.
On the purchase for B, the Arc GIS, can you just comment further on the benefits of the city, whether is that more information, better maps, just what improvements should we expect?
I've got John here from IT, but they develop obviously various softwares used by GIS division and other departments for map generation. But John, you may want to.
John Rome, Assistant Director of IT. This, Arc GIS is used, and you've heard a little bit about it previously as the mayor spoke about what we're doing with the, the police and that area. But this is the imagery that affects public safety, engineering, all of different departments within the city. So this is new updated imagery that was just done this year.
Okay, so this. Okay, thank you.
Okay.
Thank you, John. So Ryan Pruitt with an update on city hall.
Thank you, Mr. City Manager. Good morning, Mayor, members of council. Just like we promised last week, did want to come back and provide some more updates on city hall as we continue to wrap up that project and now move into the transition phase with departments actually moving into the facility. So again, just the phase one timeline, on June ninth, we did complete the construction, got our certificate of occupancy, still working a little bit on final cleaning, furniture relocations and some other closeout activities. And so departments, I could have took tentatively out of here because they are scheduled to begin relocation this week. So here's an updated list of the departments that are relocating to city hall along with the date, their first day in the new location. So you can see the IT department is first on the list and they are moving tonight. So they're packing up, they've been packing up for a while, getting relocated after hours this evening, and then they'll come in in the morning, get everything hooked back up and be ready for business on Wednesday at, at the new location. Finance is also moving this week, and you can see the listing of the other departments there as well. This will be their first day in the new location. So like the sixth floor, which is the mayor's office, city manager's office, city attorney clerk of council, they're going to move over a weekend. So they'll kind of pack up on that Friday and, and move over and be ready that following, following week. So we are going to print large posters of this schedule in place at all the buildings that have affected departments. So at the government center, at city hall, at this building and at the annex, we'll have posters at the front door, alerting departments. We're also going to get some press releases and some other information out and put it on social media and get the word out as much as we can to cut down on any inconvenience to people looking for services from these departments.
Councilor Tucker?
In phase two, what all departments will be located here and versus located at the new government city hall?
So once phase two is complete, the, see parks and recreation, the administration that's at this building currently is moving as part of phase one. And then the finance, the revenue division that is here, they are moving as part of phase two. So those two departments and three one one, which is here now, they're moving as part of phase one as well. So those departments will be moving out of here throughout this process.
So when city hall is completed, the only thing that would be over here is the tax assessors? Is that how that works?
Tax assessor, tax commissioner, and elections.
And elections.
Would still be here.
All right, thank you.
I did just want to run briefly through the floor plans again. We, we touched on them last week. Again, north is to the right of the screen, so that's twelfth street is to the right. First Avenue is at the bottom, Broadway at the top. Then the parking garage would be on the left-hand side. So the red dots are all the public entrances on the first floor. And the dark teals cooperative extension in the pink in the bottom right is the finance department that's coming from the fifth floor of the tower. The brown area at the top is HR. And then in the top left corner is the city's health and wellness center. They're moving, I guess, kind of a phase one A, they're scheduled to move in September. The second floor, the large green square, that's the IT department. Job training is right next to them. Then the purple area is parks and rec. Again, on Broadway, that's additional HR space. You can see the phase two still grayed out for now. And then the third floor, this will be the temporary home for these departments until they can relocate to their permanent home in phase two. So the green is city manager's office, pink is clerk of council, the blue is mayor's office, and the orange color is the city attorney's office.
Councilor Thomas?
Do we still have parks and rec at Comer Auditorium?
So I do believe they still will have some operations there. I do know that they are consolidating some of their division leadership into this facility. I'd have to have Holly address the specific plans, but I do think they'll still have a presence.
But we'll still have a presence in Comer Auditorium.
I believe that's the case.
Yes.
So I did just want to give you a little bit of a visual, some pictures of what the facility looks like now that it's complete. So this is the entrance off of Broadway in the courtyard as you come in to the building. The HR department would be to your left and, and straight ahead is the, the other building. This is the lobby area in the HR learning center. And again, all this, really all we did to this space was paint the walls and put new carpet. Everything else came with the building. This is the large training room in the HR area. So again, all the trim and everything came with the building. We just painted and put some new carpet down. This is kind of a typical conference room, just with your TV. And, and again, the furniture was what we procured with the building. And then this is kind of a typical office setup for a standard employee. Again, furniture that, that came with the building. And these are cubicles, cubicle area within one of the departments. And again, these were reused things that we procured from when we purchased the property.
Came with the building?
Yeah. This is a copy work area, so the copier would go right down here on the left-hand side. So we did have new cabinets, all that to give, you know, departments room to work. And just real briefly, the phase two timeline, Sanovis vacates the executive building in July thirty first of twenty twenty four. Then we have some renovations to it starting in August. And then these relocations will happen in early twenty twenty five with the mayor's office, city manager's office, city attorney and clerk of council moving from their temporary home in phase one, right into the other building. That'll be complete as part of phase two. Then the rest of the annex, the engineering inspections and codes, planning, community reinvestment, and the print shop will come over from the annex. And then the finance department, the revenue will move from this building over into phase two. And we have to answer any questions.
Councilor Tucker?
After the, the departments move out, can you please, and I don't know if it's you or somebody else, city manager, but far as the parking, can you put the spaces that were once for certain individuals here and have like a dedicated location for counselors parking in this facility?
Yes.
Thank you.
Councilor Davis?
Is there a plan yet for the annex, the property, the building?
Not, we, not yet, but, you know, we will be having discussions with you regarding that property.
I think that's all the questions, Ryan.
Thank you.
Thank you.
The final update, Mayor and council. Did you?
Hello again. So MCP, the warden, Herbert Walker is here pursuant to ordinance number thirteen dash thirty nine. It says, if a department or elected office is anticipated to exceed their budget appropriations, they must come before this council and request additional appropriations. So MCP is one of our public safety departments. You know, they house inmates similar to the jail. You heard the sheriff, we brought the sheriff in a couple of months ago in terms of the anticipated overage that he would experience at the jail relative to some of the costs that it takes to house inmates. MCP also housing inmates have experienced some of those same types of cost increases such as increases to the inmate clothing, the bedding. Some of the outside medical costs are a little greater than anticipated in terms of what's handled in-house by the provider versus some of the services that the inmate requires outside of the facility. And so in anticipation of what's needed for the remainder of the fiscal year, we are asking, MCP is requesting approximately seven hundred thousand dollars in additional appropriations to make it through the end of the year.
All right, it's been properly moved and seconded to the motion. Councilor Davis?
You can go ahead and take.
All right, all in favor, say aye? Any opposed? All right, that is approved.
Madam Finance Director, the, when I look at the, the the revenue, the amount of revenue that equates to the indigent care fund, it's lower than in the past. Does that have something to do with the inmates' health care and those costs and all? I mean, help, help me understand that decrease in the indigent care fund.
It does. Previously, we would, we have included in the budget from the general fund a transfer of about six hundred thousand in excess inmate costs, inmate medical costs. And so we're not anticipating that increase, I mean, that transfer from a budget standpoint for the indigent care fund. So that would be why it is less than what it has been previously.
Did you say it's about six hundred?
It was about six hundred thousand that we had budgeted.
I think we, I think it's down about two and a half, if I'm not mistaken off the top of my head.
As far as the millage that is proposed?
I don't know. Help, I mean, it's just down the amount in the fund. I was curious why.
Right, the amount is based on the transfer in addition to the millage, you know, previously to, prior to FY twenty three, we were assessing three mills. And what has been proposed, what was approved for FY twenty three was two point five mills. What was proposed for twenty four is the same.
Okay. So we reduce that this year?
We, we reduce it in the, in the current budget, yes. And it goes forward at that same rate in the proposed budget. And, and we will, I do anticipate on the next agenda, we're going to be bringing the indigent care forward for your consideration.
Okay, and we got the warden and deputy warden here, if y'all wanted to make a comment or two. I got it. Horton Walker's doing a great job. There's been a, a real focus on education for those inmates out there. He's, he's gotten tighter management on, on the inmates that go out for working with public services, public, public works. Just want to publicly thank you for the great job that, that you and your team do.
Thank you, sir. Good morning, city council, Mr. Mayor. We anticipated this time this morning. Now I got you all to myself. I, I too want to thank the staff at MCP for the hard work that they're doing. We actually have a handout.
You raised your microphone up just about.
We actually have a handout of talking points that we provide to the department corrections and any other visitors that we have come to the facility that I will pass out for you to read. The cost that we are actually covering mostly comes from our food service. It started, we started this conversation back in July last year with inflation and the cost of food that everyone acquired in the grocery stores and, and, and during that daily. It also came into the prison. The most significant came from the bird flu, where the price of eggs and poultry, chicken, turkey, and everything that we had on the menu significantly increased. And with conversations through our contractor, Aramah, we've been able to work with those things and also keep Miss Angelica in the loop on what's going on to also. on what's going on to also anticipate those price increases for next year's budget implementation. We have Deputy Warden King here with me. He won, he's going to discuss a couple of areas that we saw on our budget. They kind of got out of whack and explained what we're doing to make sure this upcoming year, we are able to kind of address those before it gets to this point.
Thank you, Walker. Good afternoon, good evening, good morning, I'm sorry. One of the areas that I wanted to start talking off, talking about was the medical area. Inside the prison, one of the things that we're experiencing right now is a lot of mental health inmates coming through the system. They're coming in and the medication and the cost of them is skyrocketing. That was not anticipated in the previous budget. But that's one of the things now that is, is spearheading the overage that we're experiencing in our medical budget. Another thing, like what we were talking about, is food service. Food service is up. I think we were somewhere at the point where we haven't two months worth of food service to pay the bill that we owe right now. So that's another area that's going on. Finally, one of the areas that we are looking at is the shortage of staff. So we have to compensate for people coming in and working overtime and also for stipend pay for those individuals to come in and work also. And those are the areas that are affecting our budget. And so we ask for these things in the upcoming budget to supplement, to make sure that that don't happen in the future. But we do understand that it will happen in some of those areas, especially medical and the cost of medication. Any questions?
No, sir. Deputy King, thank you.
Thank you.
And talking about staffing, I just want to throw a few numbers out there. We are now sending out about 250 to 260 inmates a day out to work. About 2,500 inmates a week coming and going out of the back door. All of the details that we have that we assign inmates to, we fill them up. You know, when we were sending out three or four inmates, now they're going to get to require eight. The inmates, daily regimen, we get them up at 4:00 AM. By 6:30 AM, they've been fed, they've dressed and ready to go to work, sent out in the dayroom, and we put them on those trucks. So the feedback that I get from the department is, through the City Managers' meetings and talking with them personally, is that sanitation is getting caught up, Parks and Rec getting things done, recycle center. I mean, everyone is working because we're getting those guys up and getting them. If we had more detailed offices, I'd send more out. You know, but at this point, we're making sure everyone gets everyone, everything they need. Also saying that that's how many more meals are going out every day, that's increasing those costs. You know, 2021, we were sending out 190 inmates out to work compared to 260 right now. So we're sending out enough meals with the inmates coming out of the buildings today to meet their caloric intake, even while they're out at work. We have to make sure those things done. So those price increases increase as we send more inmates out. So I just wanted to make sure we understood that.
Yes, sir.
And I want to open up the floor for any questions for myself or Deputy Warden King.
Thanks, sir. Counselor Barnes.
Just to piggyback on what everyone said, what you said, Mayor, Warden, you're doing an excellent job. And as you very well know, I have relatives and friends of mine that's been out there to the, for a very long time. You've made a drastic difference. Morale is up. I know you're dealing with the staffing issue. But you know, you, you have people work anytime, any hours because of the way you've treated them. You have done a marvelous job as far as morale among the individual, the security officers there. And so, and you're definitely handling all the issues that will accommodate. Every last one of those inmates there are respected and are treated very well. And so I just wanted, from the standpoint of the feedback that I've been getting from some of the individuals who were there and from many of the, the security officers, of the phenomenal job you've done.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Counselor Barnes. Counselor Davis?
Mr. City Manager, I don't know if this coincides with what the Warden, Warden just told us, but I will tell you from a perception, okay? And, you know, we, we often share the bad things and the ugly things, and sometimes you got to share the, the good things and the right things as well, you know, and balance it. But I will tell you, from a perception standpoint, just riding around, it seems like our streets are, are cleaner. Okay, depending on who you are and what perspective, you know, people have different perspectives. There may be some that totally disagree with me, but I've, I've seen, it just seems like there, there's some work being done. And even I saw some of the, what we used to see all the time, I remember when Judge Cohen was here. When Judge Cohen was here, I mean, he did not play. He put people out on the streets on the weekend, and they had to do community service. That was part of their payback. But I think I've seen some people doing some community service lately in some areas, which I'm just saying it's making a difference. So like I said, sometimes you have to, we have to speak about the bad, but you need to speak about the good too. It just looks like from a perception that things, you know, we can always improve, but things do look a little, little better in some places. Thank you.
Thank you. Mayor Protem?
Warden, I see this programs and services offered, and that's, that's impressive. Could you, would you mind talking about that and let the public know what services you're providing in addition to the inmates while they're there?
All right, just talking about, as a matter of fact, today we're starting our next class on the forklift certification. We have 20 additional inmates that's going to be starting that class today, this afternoon. One day complete, that's going to take our numbers up. In the last 18 months, to 98 inmates that will receive, will have received their forklift driving certification if they successfully complete that course. Also along with that course is OSHA 10-hour certification that they also will receive on safety, how to be able to read and interpret the 1910 manual on OSHA safety. Motivational for change, these programs, these next listed programs, the inmates actually go to these classes, courses after they work all day. So when they come in from work, they get cleaned up, we give them their lunch tray, and a lot of times they have to take it to school with them. Motivational for change, reentry, moral recognition therapy, and GED. We boast that we have 13 inmates who have successfully obtained their GED in the last 18 months. We just had a graduation in May. Counselor Tucker attended and some others. And some of the other programs that we had, I know City Manager came out for the graduation. We had the, the Council Appreciation Luncheon. Ms. Crabbe came and took the tour. Mayor Protem, you were there. And our doors are always open. The place is clean. I feel comfortable with inviting you now.
He said his doors are always opened.
For you guys, our inmates. Anytime you want to come visit and, and spend time with myself, the executive team, the councilors, anything, just, just let us know. We, we, when I, when I have my meetings with my staff, I said, "We have the best kept secret in this COVID county." And we shouldn't be a secret. We should be out participating with the community. We should be out contributing to the community. I had discussion with the Mayor and City Manager, and he brought it up during the Mayor's talk with Columbus about us having staff assist with some of the security details throughout. Myself, Deputy Warden King have assisted in some Civic Center events. I got staff, even though they're short, they're willing to step up and help. I, I came in last night and spoke with Third Shift and, and trying to get a list of volunteers together when we get all the pieces in place. And they're excited about helping out. I was in a conference in North Virginia yesterday, yesterday. I drove 10 hours, so I wanted to make sure that I got here and used this time and boast on the, the staff at the COVID County Prison. Some of the things that Department of Corrections is doing to try to assist us in recruitment and retention is they're opening up regional training centers where the majority of my employee pool are single mothers or single fathers. And they now may not have to necessarily go away for five weeks to Forsyth to complete their post-certification training. They may be able to go about an hour from here and commute back and forth from home if that's more convenient for them. So we've been in constant communication with the Department Corrections of what they can do to assist us. We out, as they say, we're all fishing from the same pond for employees. And we trying to, you know, have avenues for them to, to better attract them to come and work at MCP and state. So I appreciate all of the accolades, but I couldn't do it without the staff there. I'm just the mouthpiece. I put on my gloves. Deputy Warden of Security, Thomas puts on his gloves and takes the staff down there and makes sure. We got 100,000 occasions where inmates can bring contraband in a year. That's going and coming back to work. And some of them take advantage of it. Cell phones, drug, fentanyl, marijuana, you name it. They're trying to organize to bring it in. And so the same staff that I'm bragging on are there beating the bushes to make sure this stuff doesn't come into the facilities and keep the inmates and also the citizens safe because we're sending these same guys out into these neighborhoods. Deputy Warden King and the team on Friday morning screened every inmate that we get throughout the week during classification to make sure we're putting them in the proper position of proper details and supervised by the proper detail officers to make sure we don't have any issue.
All right, Counselor Tucker.
Yes, Warden Walker and Deputy Warden King and the staff, I want to thank you and thank you for inviting us to the graduation. I just really admire the work that you all do and how you treat people like individuals. That graduation was really nice and seeing the families out there, the kids, you know, the wives, dads, and people, you know, was just, they couldn't hold back the tears because they were so proud that their loved one had received, you know, their GED or whatever certification. So this, this is really great. I'm happy that you're doing this, that you all are doing this. And just listening to some of those justice-involved individuals, how they were, they were appreciative. You know, they, they look at you sometimes sadly in those environments. You're, you're like a father figure and a brother, you know what I'm saying, or uncle, you know how they do now. But they look at you all as, you know, that, that basic need that they probably did not get growing up. And you, you all are truly doing a fantastic job out there. So I just, I want to thank you for what you all do.
Thank you, ma'am. Counselor Huff?
Warden Walker, Deputy Warden King, and not here, Deputy Warden Thomas, thank you all for all you do. I just want to piggyback and say the attitude of the details have changed. Yeah, they're a lot more respectful. They're a lot more concerned about what they're doing as they move through the neighborhood. I see them in different parts, you know, from my house to other parts of neighborhoods I ride out some days. But it, it's definitely been a change. And then the weekend crew, between you and City Manager's Office, everybody's out on the weekend. Because I especially have problems with that. Old Cathedral Road piece coming back across the tracks there, old Cathedral Road to Cathedral Road because there's not a sidewalk yet. So to keep that pushed back and clean helps for people to walk down that sidewalk just to move from one swipe to another. But thank you so much. I appreciate it. Again, my apologies I gave you. I had to work and missed the luncheon, but I'll be coming back soon. And just, just keep me on your list.
All right.
Thank you both.
Warden, I can't thank you enough for the job that you guys are doing. Good job.
Thanks, sir.
Thank you, Warden. Mr. Mayor, he was coming here because of his budget needs, and he turned it into a work session.
I heard him.
And took advantage of his time with you. Thank you, Warden. Mr. Mayor, that concludes my agenda today.
All right, Madam Clerk?
Good afternoon, Mr. Mayor, members of council. For the Clerk's agenda, item one, I am withdrawing this resolution. Item two is a resolution excusing Counselor Cogle.
Motion to approve item two and three. Is there a second?
Second.
All right, all in favor say aye. Are there any opposed? All right, two and three are approved. Motion and a second to receive item four. Any, any input on any of those? All in favor say aye. Any opposed? Motion second to receive the minutes. All in favor say aye. Any opposed? Counselor Thomas?
I mean, Mr. Mayor, I, in looking at the, the minutes that are on here, I see the Crime Prevention Board minutes are from 2020 and 2021. I'm not sure why we, why it's taken us two years to get those, those minutes.
We can get Mr. Brown. I know he's had some struggles through COVID, being a one-man band in that organization, trying to get all the minutes correlated. I think he's been getting caught up. He is going to have somebody to help him going forward that can help him with the administrative duties. But we can certainly bring him and ask him to kind of explain what happened with those minutes.
I just, I just, I guess my, my point is I think we need to be real clear with these boards and commissions and so forth that they must take minutes and they must get them to us in a timely manner. And I can understand perhaps the, the COVID stuff, but if you take minutes on May the 13th of 2020, you ought to be able to get them to council before June of 2023.
Agreed.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Item number six are council appointments that are ready for confirmation. For the Board of Family and Children's Services, Dr. Chandler Paget was nominated.
Motion second to confirm. All in favor say aye. Any opposed? All right, Dr. Paget is confirmed.
For the Board of Water Commissioners, Ms. Jennifer S. Upshaw was nominated to fill the unexpired term of Ms. Rebecca Rumor and to serve a full term.
Motion second to confirm Ms. Upshaw. Any discussion? All in favor say aye. Any opposed?
For the Building Authority of Columbus, Mr. Tyler Martin-Dill was nominated to succeed Mr. Vincent Allen.
Motion second to confirm Mr. Martin, Martin, all in favor say aye. Any opposed?
Item D, Keep Columbus Beautiful Commission, Ms. Doris Bishop was nominated.
Motion second to confirm Ms. Bishop. All in favor say aye. Any opposed?
Item E, Keep Columbus Beautiful Commission, Mr. David Hauser was nominated to fill the unexpired term of Mr. Doug McCloutt Jr. He may be confirmed.
All right, motion second to confirm Mr. Hauser. All in favor say aye. Are there any opposed? He's confirmed.
Also for the Keep Columbus Beautiful Commission, Ms. Kimberly Wright was nominated to succeed Mr. William Bandy.
Motion second to confirm Ms. Ms. Wright. All in favor say aye. Are there any opposed? She's confirmed.
And the Keep Columbus Beautiful Commission, Ms. Pamela Green Thomas was nominated to fill the unexpired term of Ms. Alyssa Williams as the at-large.
Motion, motion and second to confirm Ms. Ms. Green Thomas. All in favor say aye. Any opposed?
For the Planning Advisory Commission, Mr. Rick Stallings was nominated.
Motion second to confirm Mr. Stallings. All in, all in favor? Any, any opposed? He's confirmed.
Item I, Region Six Regional Advisory Council for the Department of Behavior, Health, and Development of Disabilities. Ms. Janice, Dr. Janice Bussi was nominated to succeed Ms. Cynthia Smith.
Motion second to confirm Ms. Bussi. All in favor say aye. Any opposed?
For the Retirees Health Benefits Committee, Mr. John D. Hawk was nominated to succeed Mr. Mike Massey.
All right, there's a motion second to confirm Mr. Hawk. All in favor say, say aye. Any opposed? He's confirmed.
Thank you. We have council and district seat appointments. Any nominations may be confirmed for this meeting. The Community Development Advisory Council, the seat of Sandrika Lakes, this is the District Nine representative. For the Public Safety Advisory Commission, the seat of Pamela Williams, this is the District Two. Jennifer S. Upshaw, this is the District Five seat. Jennifer S. Upshaw, this is the District Five seat, and we have a vacant seat for the District Six. Next, we have council appointments, any nominations will be listed for the next meeting. For the Building Authority of Columbus, the seat of Leela Carr, she is not seeking reappointment. This seat is open for nominations. The Columbus Aquatics Commission, we have the seat of Bruce Samuels, it is open for nominations. The Keep Columbus Beautiful Commission, the seat of Lee Jordan and Dr. Coretta Venable, she is not eligible to succeed. These are open for nominations. Still working with the Keep Columbus Beautiful Director to fill these seats. Planning Advisory Commission, the seat of Gloria Thomas, it is open for nominations. She is eligible to serve.
I renominate Gloria Thomas.
Thank you. Counselor Huff has renominated Ms. Thomas. We will bring this back at the next meeting for confirmation. And we have one upcoming board appointment, this for the Audit Committee. This is the mayor and the council appointment. And that's all I have, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, and I will say that I've had meetings with some of the young game changers in, in Columbus, I guess last week, and I had about four meetings. Every one of them were curious as how they could get involved in board, so I would invite, I would urge council to reach out to the YP at the Chamber and/or the YP at the Urban League, because some of those individuals had expressed an interest, they just didn't know how to go about getting involved there. So it wouldn't hurt to get a few to talk to and see if you can find somebody that you feel comfortable appointing. Counselor Barnes?
Yes, I will be rotating off of the River Valley Regional Commission Board. I remember June Weatherston, when he appointed me, I was kicking and screaming and hollering and said I didn't want to do this because I didn't understand doing things from a regional perspective. But for the 16 years, I think, I've, I've been on there, I've learned the importance of it. Not only met a lot of phenomenal people, learned a lot. And so I want to nominate Counselor Tucker. I've spoken to you about, months ago about it, so I would request that this council consider nominating her for the River Valley Regional.
There is a motion in a second to approve Counselor Tucker as the representative with the RVRC.
I'm going to nominate her to close.
All right. Is there a motion to approve by acclamation? I would say congratulations, Counselor Tucker. And I will say that I cannot overstate the impact that Counselor Barnes has had in that entire region through, through a couple of TSPF votes. His leadership as chair of that organization, he has been neck deep in every one of the every one of the initiatives that they provide, and I just want to thank you for representing this area so capably. They're going to miss you.
My pleasure.
And Counselor Tucker, good luck filling those, filling those big shoes. All in favor of Counselor Tucker, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? We had already just claimed that you did. Counselor Tucker, comment?
Yeah, I know, I know. I'm so thankful for Counselor Barnes. When I first started on council in August of 2020, he actually pulled me aside and said, I need you to, to get involved with RVRC. And the first thing I did was an initiative with our, our senior hunger coalition, and I just learned so much in, in these almost three years. But it really started with Mayor Protem Pew. We would go out there together, and I knew it was something that I would be interested in, in being involved in because I just saw the amount of work that was being done. But thank you, Counselor Barnes, for just your, your wisdom and your friendship, and I appreciate you a whole lot. I also want to say thank you to everyone who attended the Juneteenth festivities over the last few weeks. We had an amazing turnout at the Civic Center. We didn't start doing the, the head count until 6 o'clock because my mind wasn't working, I just had so many moving pieces. But from, at 6 o'clock, from the time we actually started, it was over 2,500 people came in. So we missed the however many thousand-plus folks that came in prior. And Counselor Cogle, she actually was the mayor, and she did the greeting, and she did a great job. But the Civic Center staff, and I mean, just staff period within Columbus Consultative Government, our community partners, our, our major sponsors, Athlet, Community Foundation, Columbus Public Library, CSU, and Urban League, and United Way, I'm trying to go through. But just, it, it really turned out so nice this entire weekend, and I heart, I heart radio, I almost forgot. But it just turned out so nice. It was just so nice, and everybody, when you watch the news, I don't know if you all watch the news cycles, but there were violence, you know, going on throughout. They say it was a violent weekend, and it was some things that happened at Juneteenth. I had people send messages saying that we had the most secure event, they felt safe, and they were just happy that they had something to do that was fun and it was for everybody. The kids had a great time. Again, thanks Parks and Rec, Holly and her team for doing the kids on, but we just had a really good time, so I just wanted to say that and say thank you to everybody.
Counselor Tucker, great job on organizing that again. Counselor Thomas?
Council may remember, a couple of weeks ago, we presented a proclamation to Vanessa Ellis, who was the Muskogee County School District Teacher of the Year last year and was one of the top 10 in the state. Well, two weeks ago, they named the top, the Georgia top teacher of the year, and Ms. Ellis came in first, first runner-up. We have never, we have had teachers in the top 10 before from Muskogee County, but we've never had one in that position. So I just wanted to let you and the community know, Ms. Ellis, you made that, you made that.
Well, it was, I tell you, it was an eventful weekend. Columbus, it's gotten aware, if you go downtown, those, those hotels are completely full because there are so many events going on. I know this past weekend, a great job done on Juneteenth by Counselor Tucker. We had the police and fire games kicking off, which if you get a chance, you ought to go visit some of those. And of course, we had a new Miss Georgia crowned. It was our, it was, it was the 78th partnering between Columbus, Georgia and the Miss Georgia Pageant and program. So it was, it was, it was a big weekend for, for our community, and it's getting to be more and more commonplace. All right. Does anybody else have any business? No more business. Motion second to adjourn, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? We are adjourned.